We provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Thank you. Roll call, please. Kyle?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
I'm here.
Margaret?
Here.
Sherri?
Here.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. I motion to approve the agenda as presented in the catch. Do I have your support?
Your support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we're going to do public comments. Since the last meeting, I have not received any emails from the public. Any member of the public may address the board at this time. Please sign in and state your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
Okay, my name is Sandy Fortuna. I'm here to support Superintendent Brian Wamsley. I've worked with Mr. Wamsley as a parent and a member of the Board of Education. I currently work with him as a member of the Richmond Education Foundation. I've always found that Mr. Wamsley was professional, polite, available, and helpful. When I was a part of evaluating him when I sat on the board, he was doing a great job and I believe he continues to do a great job. It has been suggested that Mr. Wamsley has not had the community's best interests in mind, but I would argue that he is very invested and involved in this community. He is a member of many organizations within the community, and he's a very hands-on superintendent. There's not very many superintendents that know a lot of students by name, but Mr. Wamsley does. The only agenda he's ever had is to better this district for the students. It has also been suggested that Mr. Wamsley's contract should be bought out. What a huge waste of money that would be for this district, not to mention the extra nautical loss to the district. We don't all have to be friends with who we work with to recognize when they're doing a great job. Now, the board needs to do their job, and they need to work together for the best interests of the students.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Jerry Miller. I think over the last, I don't know, twenty-some years, I've attended hundreds of board meetings, worked on the bond issue committees that did all of this in the auditorium. Brian Wamsley is the best superintendent this school district has had. We've met a lot of really mediocre people in administration. Takes the cake. There's not a person in this district that can hold a candle to him. Just what he does for the school and his focus has been on the students, not on being a good old boy or bad somebody else on the back. His job is to take care of the school and the students, to make sure they have what they've got. Never seen an administrator like him and a board member, or, excuse me, superintendent. This is unbelievable. People even consider giving him anything less than highly effective. If they do that, they do what they're doing. They should not be around. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? We are going to move on to Mr. Wamsley's evaluation. At everybody's space, I put an envelope. Inside that envelope is your original evaluation that you filled out, and then also the comments that everybody had for that section. So what we are going to do is... We're going to go through, I'm going to have everybody, or someone read the first component, just the top paragraph, and then we'll take a look at what our comments were and what was there, and we'll decide on each one if that's what we're going to do. So Sherri, could you read component one, just that top paragraph? It's called visionary leadership. Do you have it?
It should be.
I can start. I'll start at this end, I can start.
Okay, come on.
As the district's educational leader, the superintendent must articulate a strong vision for continuous improvement throughout the school district. This standard evaluates that superintendent's focus on shaping the district's culture of teaching and learning and setting high expectations for students and staff.
Thank you. Okay, according to the gathering of everybody's data, we had two highly effective and five effective. And then you'll see them below the comments that are below there. Anybody want to either disagree or make a comment? So we're not, we're not each taking turns talking about our comments? Oh, because I can give you comments. Okay. No, no, no. I'm sitting on my paperwork, obviously, you know. Yeah, I did that while it's on here. Your comments should... Oh, you didn't give... I didn't give you any because I didn't understand that we weren't all going to be speaking about each... So we're not speaking about each component? No. How come? Because you guys were following the tool. The tool suggested that you... No, the tool directed us to fill out the evaluation, turn it into the president, collate all the as far as effective, highly effective, and the comments, and now we're sharing them. You have time right now to look at it. If you wish to add comments to this one, I don't have a problem with that, but there's no need for us, you should have all done that on your own. So there's no need for us to discuss as a board? Well, wait, hold on, let me just finish my question. To discuss, we have to come to a consensus. Correct. So in order to come to a consensus, that means we all have to agree at whatever grading that we're... Grading is the right word, I'm not even sure that's the right word. But that's right, we get it. Okay. And then Brian is supposed to have the ability to... I'm giving him the ability to speak? Yes. So did he get a copy of all this that he's just looking at? No, I can give him a copy of it. Well, if we're not going to talk about it, he should read what the comments are. Because this is us evaluating him. I don't understand why he wouldn't get a copy of the comments of what he's being evaluated for. Okay, so we're discussing. Okay, so Margaret, if you want to start or share your thoughts, we're discussing. Okay, so does it look like I'm the only one that's going to be sharing my thoughts tonight? No, no, the others is going to, it's up to them. Every board member will have their choice. Okay, but really, Doug, do you think that that's acceptable? When you evaluated your staff, was that how you did it? What? There wasn't communication back and forth with your... There was, but that's what this opportunity is now. That's what I... Okay, but you just said we're not, we're not... We're not going to go through each of the components or whatever here, but if you want to... I'm not talking about the components. If I gave an effective rating, Right. Am I speaking to why I gave each board member speaking? You don't have to. Why not? Because you don't have to. That's up to, that's individual. But how is that a proper evaluation to the superintendent? If we're not talking back and forth? I don't, and if I'm the only one that feels this way, please let me know if I'm the only one sitting here that feels that this is a little awkward.
I do agree that the superintendent needs feedback from us, I guess. I don't know, I was surprised on this format a little.
In what way, Angela, we talked about...
I guess we thought it was closed session, and we would have a little more roundabout discussion about some of what you said if we wanted in the...
Mr. Wamsley did not want a closed session.
I realize that, yes. So, I mean, I'm more than willing to speak on it.
I'm more than willing to make my comments.
He has now what we've, what the president has created, so he will have this, and this has our feedback in it. I do think that we, as a board, need to discuss and...
Determine, determine.
What we would put in the final
Correct.
Component rating and comments.
Correct.
To get...
Yeah, we have to come to a consensus on what the rating is. Correct. So if you, but if he's just reading, because these are all bullet points. So if he doesn't know who said possibly create district improvement plan to help define a clearer vision for continuous improvement throughout the school district, if he doesn't know where that's coming from as a board, and if you haven't discussed it with him, and if we haven't sat down on a board and talked about the vision of what we're doing, I'm just a little concerned.
It gets funny when it comes, he has who it's, we don't need to say who it's from. We have now what everybody has said, and we can have an open discussion now, and he can get our feedback now, currently, I feel.
I know, but if I...
What if I do round robin and say, "I said this, and I said this, and I said that"? It shouldn't matter what board member it comes from.
Sure does, because if you're giving him, if you're speaking about something that is ineffective, if you think his job is ineffective, he needs to know where it's coming from. If he's never, if he reads something and has never spoken to the person or doesn't know where it's coming from, that's what I'm saying. That's what an evaluation, if I have an issue tonight, and if I haven't brought it up to Brian or talked about it to him, I can't flat it down in the evaluation document. That's what I'm saying. That was in the directions. That was clearly, Margaret, in the directions that was with them. So any comments that are on here, and we've clearly all talked about it, and I stressed it when we talked about this in my email, that unless you talked with him about an issue or concern, you could not put it in this document. I... You absolutely did say it. But there, as you're reading these, I guess, I don't know, I'm just really confused that we're not going to sit at this table and have a good, open conversation about what we wrote as our comments, which, and I apologize if I misunderstood that I was supposed to give you my comments. I brought them tonight for each component to speak about. But it just, it doesn't feel like a real good back and forth give and take here if it's just, well, here's all the comments and the grade is such. I believe right now, we have, we're looking at one. If you choose to make a comment or address your comment on here, it's your choice. Okay, and then, so as a board member, if I'm looking at something and I have a comment, and I can ask about it, like we have, like who, you know, where did this comment come from? And I can ask Brian, were you aware of this situation? You could ask Brian that, yes. So going back, does anybody wish to share their comments? I don't have a problem. I'll start right off and say, I'm the one that said the mission site, our mission statement's always on the website. We stated at every board meeting. Guaranteed for learning is in all of our letterheads, and a lot of times, I know Mr. Wamsley puts that inside of letters. Priorities, having students engaged. I had some other thoughts, but then I had to remember that I knew them as administrator and not as board member. I put down, I put effective. I did not put highly effective in this category. I felt there were some things that he could work on. Okay. I put highly effective. During budget talks, looks to bring new things to the district. Looking to increase STEAM, we've increased it, looking to continue to increase it to K-12. Brought in the curriculum director position. Gives guidance to STEAM program. Creates a plan for educational goals through the budget process. monitors through the curriculum director and administration. Collects and uses data through School Improvement Info. Meets with administrators regarding School Improvement Info. Continues to sustain teaching numbers. Add staff before it becomes an issue. For example, at the beginning of the school year when we needed to add the kindergarten, we talked, the kindergarten numbers were added, or not the numbers were added. The teacher was added because of the numbers. Is on top of all of that stuff, and so then moves, moves and gets that taken care of. That greatly helps teachers so that we don't have them concerned that their class size is large. It helps parents and students that we don't disrupt them after we're in school for a month. Keeps the numbers down in the elementary building. That is something that we say, I think, every single year when we talk about budget stock, that that is a huge priority. He absolutely has taken care of that. He is on top of educational matters throughout the state and locally just for the information that he gives us at every single board meeting and that he gives us through emails or just when you're having conversations with him and when you attend Macomb County School Board Association dinners. The people that know him there, the legislative stuff that he knows, he's on top of everything. That is a true visionary leader, in my opinion. I guess I'd like to ask, that's all that bits that I said there. And then I just, I'd like to know, the lack of strategic plan not shared with board or district. I don't understand that, that one myself. As far as, do we have a strategic plan? No, no, this says, lack of strategic plan not shared with board or district. Goes back to the question, do we have a strategic plan? No, that doesn't make sense. Lack of strategic plan not shared with board or district. Is it a lack of strategic plan or the strategic plan is not shared with the board or the district? I don't understand whoever, whoever did that. Mr. Wamsley, do we have a strategic plan? Because as a board, I've never seen it or heard it, we've never talked about it. That I can remember, I've only been on it for eleven months. Eleven months.
We have a strategic plan that was developed several years ago, and then COVID hit, and everything on the way sucked. It was with the administrators, teachers, we sat in this room. There was a group of parents in that meeting, and we developed that strategic plan. It was finalized, we actually had a consultant come in and work with us to get to that point, and then again, schools shut down. And the whole basis of that plan was put on.
I can vouch for that because I was on the committee when they first started that here. The other question that I had as far as Brian and this one, do we have a district improvement plan?
The reevaluation of the school improvement doesn't require a district anymore.
Got it.
No one requires a building base. We did, but it was required. We have a district and school improvement team, which is representative of the administrators as well as the curriculum director and then the chairs for the individual buildings.
So we no longer need a district plan?
We do not need a district plan.
That's good to know. Okay, my last one. Would like school improvement plans more prominent in district vision. What does that mean? Whoever said that?
I was the one that spoke that. I feel that we, I would like, even though we are not forced to have a district plan, I would prefer to have a district plan so that all three schools are on board with their school improvement plans and making efforts towards increasing student proficiency. And I would like to see our school improvement plans more prominent in our leadership and our vision, you know, our district vision. Because I would like to see, you know, make more emphasis on improving those proficiency scores. Okay, you can talk.
I think that's a good idea, but knowing how school improvement plans go and how SIP committees in past districts, those change, you know, from year to year, and a district vision is something that, I don't know how it was created here, but is generally created by each of the staff and the district as a whole. And the school improvement plans change, you can't change a district vision, you know, constantly, but I think, yeah, those SIP plans should be a little more prominent. I agree.
Any other comments from the board?
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So in the school improvement plan is more visible or prominent, do you have what you mean by that?
I guess us as a board, or maybe even having more of a clearer, I don't know, maybe more presentations on how we're at or where we're planning to go. I know Mrs. Zara's done some great work there currently, and I would just like to see that continue. And see, you know, I guess, just for us to be talking about that more as a board and as a district, where we're going with that.
So is that something, as a board, you want at a meeting or a board meeting? If that's the case, then I will arrange for the, as a board, if that's what you're looking for, then I will arrange for the buildings to be, have that conversation more rightfully in the board meeting.
Is that along the lines of, I mean, because we do get school improvement updates. Just had one, we get student growth data. But it, school improvement, though, that's what that, that last group of the administrators, okay? So are you talking, that's a school improvement plan that we're following, that's what they had to do? Are you talking about you want to see a more focused, like monthly thing about different programs? What exactly are you talking about?
Well, I was thinking more about as a district, and maybe it wouldn't have to be regularly, but like every year, we would see where we were and address where we're going and what steps maybe we can continue that are working, that aren't working, and where we're at and kind of measure. Because I would like to pull in more student proficiency numbers into maybe the superintendent evaluation down the road. I know we use student growth numbers, but I would like to see our student proficiency increase. And that's, I guess, what I'm trying to emphasize on a little more. I know we get our student growth data and our school improvement plans, but I would like to see more of how are we gonna, you know, decrease this, you know, deficiency we have right now? Or grow and hit, you know, I would like it to be above 50% of our students. Majority of our students are proficient at grade level rather than less than the majority. So I guess, like, I guess what I'm looking for is a goal for us as a board and superintendent, or even the whole district, to get involved and say, where would we be in two to three years from now? What would we want to be at?
So going back to the school improvement that we just were presenting, when I asked the question of Mr. Castle about the high school and that. So I fully expect that we're going to get some kind, something that's going to come back to update. Is that what you're talking about? That when they come, when they come and do their annual, that if there are questions, those answers come back to us to see?
I would like it to be more defined throughout the district, what it is our goal and what we're shooting for, and put in our student improvement plan that's open to all the, anybody to see. It's on our district website. So I would like, I guess, it to be more clearly outlined for anybody to see and for us as a district to take accountability to where we would be in two to three years from now and how we would get there. And then we address it, you know, or yearly or, you know, ever so often.
Can I jump in a little? I don't believe what we saw the other, last week was our district improvement plan or our building improvement plan. Yes, Margaret, you did ask, which was what I was looking for. What are we doing? How are we remaking these numbers? All that was was data. I'd like to actually see what are the goals for each building? And how are they meeting those goals? And that I have not seen. Now, we may have done, and I know last year, I think, did you, we not do any because of COVID?
Because of COVID.
That's what I thought.
If you go back to the last four years prior to that, there's always been in June, the presentation of the school improvement plan in the district, where we've outlined, followed up with, here's the PD that we put in the grant to support that plan. Last year, it was waived because of COVID.
So Brian, do we ever start, could we start the year with, okay, these are our goals? So we know exactly what those goals are? And then maybe have, just to follow up in January or something like we kind of did here when we had the numbers and then the final one in the end with that?
If that's in the board, it's easily put together.
I don't have any problem with, tell us in the beginning, tell us in the end, okay? And if that's the beginning of the school year and that's June?
Problem with the end is that data that you got was embargoed until we could find the board. So you're hearing it months after it's been done, which is problematic. And I can give you, I'd love to be able to say that the school report card grades, they're up. They're embargoed right now, I can't publicly say them.
Can we do it, could we flip it then? So that we would have, we could do numbers and stuff in the fall? Like in September? That would have been the previous year's data and stuff?
When that's released, that's what we've typically done, is the numbers, the district stuff.
Okay.
Buildings, you know, what's the need been having me stuff, I should say me. So my stuff in the high school assessment is...
Because I know that when we develop our school improvement plans, it is based upon our data. Where are we low at? Do we need issues in math? Do we need, you know, so those numbers do directly impact what our goals are per building, and they may not be the same in every building.
Correct, and part of the retreat we do with the administrators is they spend time this year outlining all five of their PD days that they're doing with the staff so that it was tied to their school improvement plan and what we're looking at for the best practices for teaching.
Anybody else want to put any comments here or make any comments? Okay, before we move on, then, we need to agree as a board, what are we going to, and I will write it down here. What are we going to mark? Are as highly effective or effective? Do we want, we just do a roll call down the line? That work?
I'm the other one that had a highly effective, so...
I think you would mark it too.
As I said, I'm the other one.
Sorry.
Can I just ask?
Sure.
And I just want to make a statement to you that just because someone is rated highly effective doesn't mean they have nowhere to go, nowhere to grow, no, no way to do better. You can always do better. You can be highly effective and just keep getting more highly effective. So I guess I just, when you look at visionary leadership, Brian has some of the best vision that a superintendent can have in where we've come and where we are this year. And we're talking about this year's stuff. So just if it's, if your rating's effective and everyone has a right to their rating, just what makes it effective and what not highly effective, I guess? And no one has to answer if they're not comfortable saying why they... Great, and I keep saying great, and I don't know if that's the right word. Ranked?
Yeah.
But I just, I don't know how we can have someone only be considered, and effective is good, but that we don't consider Brian Wamsley a visionary leader. I don't get it. And highly effective add.
Any comments from anybody else?
I don't feel like you have to... If you're effective, you are a visionary leader. You don't have to be highly effective to be a visionary leader. I think you have to literally, I don't know how to describe what's on my head, but you have to literally jump through every group and then some, in my book, to get highly effective. And, you know, going by the components and going by the little bullet points. I know the bullet points aren't set in stone, but those are kind of guides and talking points and thinking points. Just the vision is lively and evident in the culture focused on student learning. Their very last bullet point, it's just this, the vision is kind of a lot, to be honest. I do think, like you said, Brian does a lot of forward thinking, but for me, to be that highly effective, you have to be like, yes, you can improve always, but you have to be up here. Effective is really where everybody starts at the beginning of every school year, to me, and you have to... But to go off your comment of, I don't think he's a visionary leader, that doesn't mean he's not visionary just because he's effective as opposed to highly effective. I think if you went to minimally effective, you would be in that, maybe not a visionary leader, but I don't feel like he's there at all.
Ms. Strongton, would you like to add anything there to that section?
The only thing I would say is, from a visionary, if you're looking for something in writing in paper, then yeah, I don't, I don't do that. But I sit at this table every two weeks, twice a month, and I talk about where we're going as a district. And the example we look at, forward thinking, is I can't think of anything more strong than the last year than my recommendation to the board to not invest in a diversity softball field, because it's a waste of taxpayer money in five years. Sitting at this table, asking this board to, when you pass a bond, and actually the military, which are going to be coming up to pass the third series pretty soon, or the second series of that bond, to look in visionary terms of, in the future of when that military drops, to give this district an opportunity to go back to the voters and promote a no increase, and have the money to put that addition on. We're down to two classrooms at the middle school, and I said it now for two years, we are gonna run out of room at that middle school. And I could have let this board build that softball diamond, and in two years, possibly three, rip it out. And that would have been a dramatic devastating impact on this PA, because you know what people would say, it would have been a waste of taxpayer dollars. You know, when I sat here looking at, when I got to this district, we rotated specials at the elementary school. You know, Ms. Telfer mentioned about STEAM, that was phased in. I'm looking at phasing out technology, and I'll say it here publicly, that is a waste of our students' time. And I will say it publicly. Instead, we need to start looking at career technical education program in our elementary school. Now, are you looking for me to have it in writing? No, I don't have it in writing. But I can tell you, every administrator that I speak to in my administrative meeting knows, we talk about this on a regular basis, where are we going? The statement in this, this is setting high expectations for students and staff. This board knows, when you do that, you make people uncomfortable. And there are people that have chosen to leave this district. And in my view, we are a better district because of it, because they were holding us back. I never forced anybody out, I never fired anybody, though I did recommend to this board one termination. And we did, it was a principle, because it was a wrong investment. But if this is what you're looking for, I don't think it's fair to come on January, November 29, when back in August, we had a mid-year bell, and this was never brought to my attention. And I am saying it because I request it in public, and as you tell parents, only you can speak about what happened in closed session. We know this, I don't believe this is fair. If you wanted it to be focused, then it should have been told to be in January, like my contract says, or minimally in May, when we adopted these goals, that this is what the board is looking for. I said, I will do whatever this board asks. But I, I follow my direction from the voice of the board, not individual board members. I disagree. I said, since I've been here, where our finances have completely shifted, from borrowing $200,000 or $350,000 from FundBound to putting $550,000 into FundBound. We've increased teaching staff, our class sizes are lower, we have five sections of every grade level. That has been a strategic marketing tool. When I got here, Facebook was 300 followers, we are 3,000 followers. That is our marketing, we're targeting specific. You ask any administrator, bring them up here, what has been my focus, my requirement of two posts a week? Why? It was strategic to get that bond passed. I am the only superintendent, I believe, that got a pass on the first curriculum. One and done was my message to this entire organization. We don't want to waste people's time and money, but we want to invest in. That happened two years ago. So what you look at when I've done this year, I think I'm a pretty damn good leader.
Anybody want to change their, their vote or their grade or whatever, or their college? What college grade to be?
I'm not here to lobby the board, because consensus is, the way they look at it, the majority, there's five. Effectively, it is not five.
And I think, in fact, it's a good rating. I feel, some people on the board feel maybe it's not, that you're being slighted. But I think, in fact, it's a great rating. Many people feel you're doing a great job, and you are an effective visionary leader. And we look forward to seeing what else you can do. But these things are defined within the component, that's why they've been brought up. I mean, as far as you saying it's not fair that they weren't brought up to you, they were defined in the component, so they have been, you knew this was what we were going to evaluate. You want to correct?
But if it was a concern back in August, then it should have been addressed back in August.
It's always a concern, everything is.
I respectfully disagree.
I'd just like to talk about the highly effective piece, and I, Mr. Wamsley evaluated me, I don't know how many times here, and we talked about highly effective. One of the things he taught me was that it is above and beyond and over, and, you know, you take that extra step, you go that extra mile. And I'm not saying that you're not doing that. I just think we have lost, we had lost teachers here, and part of it may not be your fault, but we've lost teachers because of money, because of contracts, I mean, this year alone. And that's not, you know, I don't know if that's yours or an issue, but we have lost people, good people, because we were, as a district, paying them off.
But that has nothing to do with me. I am following the contract that this board authorized me to follow, and that was negotiated, whether it was me negotiating or something else. I cannot arbitrarily move a teacher, other than when I hire them, on any step. Ask the music teacher, who came to me and asked for more money and I had to decline. Ask the Title I teacher, who's also reached out to me, and I have to decline, because I do not have the latitude to go against the agreed-upon contract. You're gonna lose food service. I, that's a good example. I told the board, they have a settled contract, they're not happy, they can go to McDonald's and make more money. I don't have the ability to unilaterally change that. So if teachers are leaving for more money, I will never stop someone from leaving, because they have to do what's in the best interest of their family. But I don't have the ability, and I don't think that's a fair statement, because I don't have the ability to do anything about that. Unless you're gonna pass a policy that says, I don't have to follow the contract, and then you're gonna be dealing with grievance after grievance after grievance. Because then it becomes arbitrary and capricious. I could just randomly pick who I proceed to like, and who I don't. The teachers that left, I called the union president, I said, here's what's gonna happen. I'm gonna say, if they turn around and reapply, I can move them to a different step. And I gave Mrs. Ranger that heads up, not only for Mr. Wagner, but Mrs. Holman, because those are teachers that we were gonna struggle finding. Mrs. Smallwood leaves, Spanish, the one that went to Romeo, and forgive me, I'm drawing a blank on her name. She was our EOP. I wish I had the ability to pull it back, because we did lose them. Mr., the English teacher, forgive me, Mr. Olden, he moved five minutes from his home. He's making a lot more money. I recommended to you to eliminate two steps, so that we can be a little more competitive in bringing people in. And I know there were board members in this last teacher contract that had concerns about the settlement. And what was my statement to those board members? When you look at the big picture, you look at the majority, the long-term prospect, it is my recommendation to approve this contract. Because it was looking in the future of what we're gonna do. I'm gonna tell you, three years, mark my word, at the end of this contract, there will be 22 teachers that will retire. They're eligible, they will have their best three years in, they will be gone. They did not sign up for teaching today what they went in 30 years ago, none of them did. And if in three years, if that's gonna be my fault, then I guess it's my fault. And I'm gonna make a prediction right here today, in three years, they will have their best three years in. And it was under the contract that this board and I set.
And with all due respect, really to say that the contracts and Brian, that maybe it's his fault, we give the superintendent the parameters on which to settle contracts.
I even want to bump those parameters, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, it's my fault, it's Kyle's fault, it's Angela's fault, it's Sherri's fault, those of us that have been here. It's people before us, Dan Hill, Tracy Bertal, all these people. So to say that it could be Brian's fault, these people left, that, if you're alluding to that, that's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. And it really, I didn't allude to that, that was not what I was saying. But as a leader and a visionary leader, I can't address it because I was not on the board. Why, and I'm not, let's not even go in there, because it deals with another board, and where we went, and why we weren't giving more money? Of course, we didn't have it. And every statement we made as a board to Brian, to go back to the teachers' union, was if the money was here, we'd pay it. And look what we did when the money was here. We made, we made a huge step forward for our teaching staff and other staff members.
Okay, any other comments for this visionary leader component one? Does anybody wish to change what they? Okay, will be effective, what, do we want to put a statement here? And if so, what should we put? No statement?
Well, we should have put in there just why we chose effective. So what are the positive things and the great things that he's doing? He's.
Like the STEAM program has been.
Not necessarily specific, but, you know, like he was talking about forward thinking, and Margaret was mentioning the kindergarten, and keeping those class sizes smaller. So having the students' overall well-being and concerns with, in mind when, creating schedules and staffing. You don't have to be super specific, but just kind of.
Anybody else? I put down, keeps class sizes small, students' overall, what was the word you used? Students' overall, overall concern.
Well-being.
Well-being, thank you. Anybody else want to add in?
Just continue to effectively look forward, as he has been, and he does a great job at anticipating what is coming down, you know, what we might be encountering in the future. So just continue to do that. I would like to look into the district improvement plan, not that I feel it needs to be in here at any point, but maybe when we do, six months from now, sometimes we'll talk about this valuation, you know? Maybe at that time, we have a superintendent evaluation update, or whatever we did last year, maybe we can discuss more of that.
Okay, so the three comments I have down is keep, keeps class sizes small, students' overall well-being is always a concern, and continue to be an effective leader. Okay, component number two, Danielle, you want to read the top?
The superintendent has a critical role in promoting effective shared governance. The standard evaluates a superintendent's ability to foster a strong partnership with the Board of Education by engaging in effective two-way communication around a set of mutually agreed-upon expectations. It also evaluates a superintendent's ability to act in accordance with board policies, regulations, and the law, and to understand the system of public school governance.
Thank you. Again, you can see our ratings, we have two highly effective, three effective, and two minimally effective. Margaret, do you want to start?
I started last time. Someone else can start.
Anybody else want to start, or address the comments, or address any comments that are on here? I know I had put in that he's, Mr. Wamsley's always up on the legislative stone, what's going on in Lansing, what's happening. You know, he's definitely on that. We always do policy work, we have looked at that, and he has shared his thoughts on the policies, and so those are updated regularly.
Looking at those bullet points that are there, I like that one as well. On top of laws and mandates, always giving a heads up on what may be coming. That's super nice, I enjoy that, and I think it's a great benefit. So that definitely.
The one on policy work, is that?
It's right in the middle, is on top of laws.
It is on top of laws, okay.
I feel like he does a really good job staying on top of it. Because just like COVID rules, they change by the week.
I would love to know what it means, no transparency in the way superintendent treats certain board members.
Yeah, I'd like to know that, too.
I'll put out what I put here. I put the superintendent has shown efforts towards creating a healthy working relationship with the board, and has improved some partnerships. Strong partnership is needed to be formed with all board members, in order to be highly effective. I know we're yet again, and I know this isn't fair to you, Superintendent Wamsley, but you are dealing with yet again, another board. It takes time for us to all get to know each other again, communication to work its way out. Unfortunately, we are here again to where communication, you know, not everybody's personality has worked out the way we hoped. But I do feel with time, I've seen you making an effort. I do feel other board members are starting to make an effort, it has been tough. But I do, I feel you're effective currently in this component, and I do appreciate the efforts you have made since I've been on the board. Nobody wants to answer Kyle's question, apparently?
Probably put me at the end.
We're one of seven voices up here, so he's gonna have a different relationship with each one of us. So it's fair, even if we don't like it, some of us board members, for those board members to voice something, we may not agree with it. And I don't feel that they should have to defend themselves to anybody.
But they do, because we're all working together as a team here. So if someone feels there's no transparency in the way superintendent treats certain board members, that's an issue, if that's real, that's an issue.
And it's been stated to him, to Superintendent Wamsley, and with that board member, and they've been working on it. So now we're stating it in his evaluation, that's all that's being done now. And for you to come out combative, as if you're trying to, you base somebody or.
First off, I didn't ask the question, Kyle did. And I'm not being combative, trust me. If you think this is combative.
No, you're doing great in open session.
Absolutely, I am, right? Because in closed session, that's when things can be said that are between family members, as I've always said.
Or don't, people get shut down, you're not able to be.
Nobody gets shut down. You only got shut down when you couldn't back up what you were saying, if you want to call that being shot. Or when you were bullied. Ladies, ladies, don't bully. Ladies, don't, don't use that word, Angela, because you don't even know what you're talking about.
Excuse me.
Okay?
Ladies, three years, Margaret.
Off topic, off topic. You bet it's been three years. Stop! But I've never bullied you.
Stop! It's off topic.
It is off topic.
Sorry, thanks. Now, let's go back to, to this, to the.
So no one's gonna talk about no transparency in the way superintendent treats certain board members. We're gonna move on from that, I take it? Whoever wrote that is not willing to talk about it?
No.
Thank you. All right. Are you good?
No.
I did highly effective. Brian is outstanding, it is two-way communication with the board. We get so much information from Brian. There isn't anybody on this board who can say that they don't know what's going on if you're not paying attention to two-way communication, and if you're not reaching out to Brian. He shares even when he possibly shouldn't, due to board members' inability to understand their roles and possibly sharing things they shouldn't. I believe he completely understands public school governance. I believe he completely understands public school governance. He continuously works to keep board members updated with respect, updated, knowledgeable with respect to that stuff. With respect to our policies, they're continuously reviewed and updated. More so, since Brian arrived, we started a little bit of it back when Dr. Olson was here, but it's, it's constant. And the administrative guidelines that go with it, collective bargaining agreements, I would have to say that's very highly effective and outstanding, since everybody's settled now, that's very, that's hard work to, to do. So I just think he meets this, this suction very well. And I believe he always gives straight answers for questions asked, even though someone doesn't think so. Mr. Womsley, would you like to add anything to the section?
When you look at the components on there, when you look at 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, and 2.4, and I look at this from my position, working with the board, and take out the fact from the board working with the superintendent, I believe I'm highly effective in this part. You're right, it is a two-way street, but you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. I can give you the information, I request to contact me, I can reach out, ask for meetings, I can do everything I can, but I can't make someone do that. And I believe I've done that exceptionally. I have spent weekends here, as I've said before, I have met with board members in the evening, I have met with them on weekends. I have adjusted schedules, I've shifted things around to try to get whatever information they have. The statement about beating around the bush, or beating around whatever that is, if you want to talk about Mr. Day's contract, I get my direction from the board. I don't get my direction from a single board member. And so if someone has an issue, or they have a curiosity, I give you the stuff, but that's all it is. It's your curiosity, it's not your role as board member. So I would hope some of these comments are not listed in the final evaluation, because I think they're wrong, and I will be writing a rebuttal towards that evaluation. For having minimally effective, and nobody telling me what I'm minimally effective at, you have now set the stage for this organization that no administrator has to tell their teachers anything about why they mark them minimally effective. You have now set the stage that I do not have to tell any administrator why I'm marking them minimally effective. Just, just if you talk about...
The board has only a couple of board members out of seven. Nobody's marked you, finally.
But I'm just saying, the conversation, if we're, if there's supposed to be an evaluation process, and we're talking about someone feels that I'm minimally effective, then it needs to be out on the table. Because if that is not the consensus of the board, then that shouldn't even be on my evaluation at all. It's the same, it's, it's the same comment I said to you, Deb, when this board voted to approve the administrator's grievance. You sent a message that I cannot, I cannot change contracts, and that you sent a message I violated their contract, and I didn't. I had not violated any contract. They did not work over their days, and I said to them they would work, but yet this board chose to violate the, or make some assumption that it happened, that didn't happen.
And our lawyer was in open session telling us...
He did not violate the contract.
But five of you voted for him.
So if we talk about policy governance, when you look at reviewing this, the other stuff, do I make mistakes? Absolutely, I'm human. But that's part of the grievance process that gets settled. And some of those grievances should not have been there, but there's another agenda on the other side of why grievances are there. If I didn't post a schedule meeting, yeah, all right, I didn't. I corrected it. I met with the union, I corrected it. All, everything's good. So someone was talking to someone else about that statement. Because I never put that, I never put that writing to the board.
What, which one? About scheduled, not filing, posting a schedule meeting? That was me. And you and I talked about it. I just put it in there because it talks in the evaluation about following policies and guidelines and things like that. You know, that should have been posted, and it didn't.
So I made one mistake, and it's, it's a comment.
These are just comments, Brian. These are not what we're going to push down, we're not writing down, this is what, just as far as, like, bullet points.
This document is now a foiable document. Your individual documents are not. This is a foiable document. So anybody out there, tomorrow, stop by my office, and I will give you a copy of this.
Again, people need to understand, though, they are just comments that are put on here of what we're trying to...
I agree. I agree they're just comments, but the average person who's going to, who does it, or the FOIA's that we've just gotten, who want information that's been said, unless they know the story, unless they know the context, it's going to be pretty easy to make some assumptions. So now, they're reading this. "I use bold italics in my emails, come across as annoyances, upset, or..." You're, you're right, I do. I do, because I'm stressing a point. Or I've said something multiple times, and I'm reiterating what I said. Yes, I do. I'm stressing it. It's the same thing I get, about the emails that I get, that call me shady, or my word, my word means nothing. Or, better yet, you're unnoticed, documents are being scripted. And for almost a whole year, no statement's been made. You have two highly effective, two effective, and two minimally. I would ask about the consensus a little bit.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Under the highly effective, it says engages the board in working of advancing organizational goals. Can you just explain how you do that?
Organization of goals. We settle contracts, and I had individual contracts, conversations with board members who worked because I pushed the boundary on what the parameters were. And I said, this is why it's important to settle this contract. You talk about engaging the board in, okay, let's go to bond. Engage the board, do you want to move a baseball field? Number two, engaging the content. Let's talk about the STEAM. I had to bring that to this board to authorize at some point. The, the policies. I bring you, I make reference every board meeting. You guys read based on the recommendation of the superintendent. Is there any discussion? That is my opportunity to engage you. You and I, you and I, and Margaret, I think are the three that I've had the most conversations with. Okay? Kyle, I will call him back. Danielle, I will call her. I don't think we've talked on the phone. Maybe we have, I don't know. But we do emails quite a bit. Sherri, I've met with. We have, I engage in, with what I can do, when I sit at this table, and I, you ask me a question, if I don't know it, I will bring it back. And do I forget sometimes? Yes. Baseball diamond, 185 feet, I forgot. But there was a lot going on that day, so I apologize, and I did confirm it with Dan Jerome. My engagement with the board is at this table. I don't have the ability to have board members come into my office and engage as a group, because that's a violation of the open meeting class. So if you're telling me, when I sit at this table every, twice a month, and I'm not engaging with the board, I'd love to see what your next superintendent's going to do, because I am engaging him.
I just have two cents to say about what Brian said. I don't think, maybe I'm just interpreting what Deb said, but I don't think she was trying to be combative or disrespectful of Brian. She was just making, or reading one of the components and asking you, just like as a teacher, I'd have to provide to my administrator proof that I did X, Y, Z, because those were my goals for the year. So she was just asking, I don't, I mean, maybe I'm...
When you sat down and talked about the process for my evaluation, you never told me, be ready to defend the bullets. You never said that to me.
But you have this. If you want to be highly effective, you've had this document last year. As a person who's been, and been evaluated in this district, I'm looking at the highly effective column to see what I'm doing, so I know that I can meet it. I don't think we should have to tell you that.
But as, as a board, you didn't set the, the goals. Your goals for me is what I have here. That's your goals. You've never said to me, as a board, we don't think you're here. You've never said that. We're now November 29th, 30 days, 330 days. You have never said that to me.
I've had it happen to me.
Pardon?
I've had it happen to me. And I'm sorry, and I don't mean to bring this up publicly, but you did that to me as an administrator. I got an evaluation, and you never...
And what did we do as that administrator? We sat down, and we talked about it, and we rationalized it.
No, we ended up throwing it out, and everybody got effective.
That was because we had a Paula Docher.
No, that wasn't in that time. I'm talking my, my evaluation. I, as a person, are going to look at highly effective. I have that evaluation, I have that tool. I've looked to see if that's where I want to shoot. Deb Michon wants to be highly effective, then I know that I got to look at those bullet points, and I need to...
Deb, if we're going to talk about your evaluation, then let's go back. What have I said since day one I got to this district?
Not everybody's highly effective.
No, no.
That was one.
About the administrator evaluation.
Well, I agree.
I hated it. I didn't like it. It was impossible for you to get there.
I agree. But I still knew that that's what I was looking for when I saw that tool. I'm just saying, I knew what I was shooting for as an administrator.
So you're, you're talking the fourth bullet?
I'm sorry.
She's just looking under the highly effective column.
I was looking under the, the third bullet.
I'm sorry, the third bullet. Proactively and effectively engages the board...
And I just wanted, oh, I...
...in working of the advancement of the educational goals.
I just wanted...
You, you can say that I have not done that?
I didn't say you didn't do it.
That's what I was trying to say.
I wanted just for you to share what you...
All right, so, so...
Because I could not, in my mind's eye, when I was looking at that, I was kind of like, okay, I'm not sure. And so I just asked you to do it.
My role as superintendent is to engage the board at the table.
So, okay.
And I think there's been, let's see, we're at 11 month, no month in July, 10 months, two meetings a month, there's been 20 meetings this year, that I've demonstrated that. I'll just leave it at that.
And I, wait, Deb, I, I think, Danielle, I appreciate what you're saying, and Deb, I don't know that you're being combative either, but I think, no, but I think if that, if you, if you are looking at that point, and if you are someone that put effective, and if that, if that point, what Brian is saying, I do that every single meeting, that is my job, that is what I do with this board at this table, that makes him highly effective. I think that's the point, as I'm listening to him talk. You asked, how do you do it? Because you said, when I'm, you've had this tool, and, and you, as an administrator, when you looked at it, what can I do to be highly effective? He just told you.
I get it, and that's what I, that's what Brian was trying to make clear.
I wanted you, that is what, that's what I wanted you to do. Now, maybe for me, now that I've heard that from you, I would change my rating to highly effective. I just needed to hear that to make...
Flip the coin. There are two people that say I minimally, engaged minimally in policy work. I dread policy. It's my, I hate it with a passion, but I do it, and I bring it, and I recommend, I provide recognition. 6:34 on Monday night, I was able to get to a computer and then share his emails about the question, and I apologized that I couldn't get to a computer. Unevenly and equitably applies district policy. I have yet to know what policy I have violated in this district policy. Occasionally demonstrates behavior indicating the value of a healthy working relationship with the board. There's been, there's been some heated email exchanges on both sides. Sometimes engages the board in the work of advancing the organizational goals. I just look at, flip the coin.
Anybody else have a comment on this one?
I did highly effective. I don't think it's a doubt. It's been a difficult year for you in your work environment.
I would go with effective, just if I'm looking at 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4. I would kind of put check marks next to each one, and that would give you one point to get across from right to left, and I would, I would say effective. I think 2.1 is just lacking a little bit. So that's where my effective comes from, as opposed to highly effective.
I would agree with Danielle about the 2.1. I did put effective, but that one, that one is a little bit, and it does go both ways, but in saying that, it goes both ways, so...
Any other comments from anybody? Well, are you considering a consensus three, or is it consensus four?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, we've always done the consensus is four.
Exactly. No, I just put the numbers up on the... So I would agree with Margaret, our consensus is four. So at this point, we don't have a consensus on number two, or component two.
No consensus just means majority, correct?
Pardon me?
Consensus just means majority. That's always how we've come to determine, correct? I'm not moving off the highly effective.
Me neither.
I don't have a problem, I was effective, I don't have a problem with moving to highly effective, because Mr. Womsley answered my question.
I'll be staying as effective. Okay, so I have four effective now, and three high least. Okay, effective it is. What do we want to put down for a comment? I know Danielle suggested is on top of the laws and mandates, and always giving us a heads up on what's coming. Is that a valid comment? Anybody else want to put some comments here? Just continue improvement towards board member relations? Okay. Okay, Angela, can you give me your statement now?
Sure.
Component three, instructional leadership. Oops, I'm sorry. Go back, I was doing comments. I only got the one to tell.
Continue to...
Oh, continue. Any other comments for that one? Okay, Angela, can we now read number three, or component three, please?
Instructional leadership. The superintendent must articulate a vision of what highly effective instruction looks like, and must ensure that the system is aligned to engage every student in great instruction every day. The standard evaluates the superintendent's skills, skills as the education leader of the district responsible for using best practices to continuously improve and drive the instructional... and drive the instructional program and to constantly focus, constantly focus on the organization, on teaching and learning.
Okay, so we had one effective. Where I did the halves, someone circled effective and minimally effective together. So we had, so five and a half effective and a half minimally effective. So that person was kind of undecided. Anybody want to start with their comments or make a comment?
I know when, mine is the first bullet point. When I was reading through what Angela just read and I made the comment that I had concerns with the recent test scores that came out that kind of related to be aligned to engage every student in great instruction every day. I have to say that, I mean, it's, you know, that my two older kids go to Anchor Bay because their dad lives in that district and they do school of choice there. And my little one comes here. But after hearing that last week, I kind of struggled. I absolutely love the special ed program here, but really struggled when I heard that information last week about the test scores. And that really concerned me. And so I chose effective for this one. I think I was the one who was in between effective and minimally effective and it was because I was coming down off of the presentation and the scores. I was really frustrated with those scores. And I, not to lie, my husband and I talked about moving Jackson once he tested his IEP down to Anchor Bay if they would take him just because of those scores. But I do like, you know, with Ms. Ara, she's been bringing in some new curriculums and stuff. And I'd love to, I'd love to have time, he's in preschool, have time to see how those things pan out. So it just would concern me as a parent hearing those numbers. And it did, so. But I would move my half up to the effective. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to?
Back in, in May, we gave Brian three goals. Component 3 was one goal because there was concerns. Board members were concerned administrators not being able to be highly effective. So they wanted a different evaluation tool. And to come up with that and to, Brian, to provide training and support to the administrators. He's met that goal. As we have a tool, they are being trained. And that was a concern that board members had. Start with working with admin training, recognizing great work by teachers in the classrooms, the STEAM expansion. And I know that their, the ISD is looking to us with respect to STEAM. And Brian, if I don't say it correctly, for Renee to, with other districts in the county to, not teach them STEAM, but they're like a consulting, asking her to go to districts and talk about our STEAM program for professional development. I don't know that I'm saying it correctly or right. So the ISD has reached out.
She's become, she's become a very good leader in the curriculum, yeah, at the ISD level. And so that was one of the conversations that was happened at what we call MACHA, a home area curriculum administrator, where she has taken on a leadership role to present that to the district.
Thank you.
And share.
That's, that's what I was explaining.
She is representing the district very well.
So if that's not an example of highly effective instructional leadership to showcase our school district and what we have done and are trying to do and continue to do with respect to STEAM, I'm not sure what is. Leads by example, he's always learning himself. So I was the one highly effective. Someone slipped in here I wanted to ask.
That's it. Can I ask again? And I'm not trying to be combative. It just, you know, when you read some of these things, it's like, okay, what does that mean? And I just want to get a better idea. So if you look on the highly effective under bullet number 3, the part that I kind of questioned or didn't know is it says, create structures for observing and analyzing instruction. So that would be like our teacher belts, am I correct?
That could be one, my book, yes.
Okay, and then it says, for making practice public as a way to deepen a shared understanding. That's the part, Brian, that I didn't, how would you see that? What do you, how do you picture that? Or what does that mean, making practice public as a way to deepen a shared understanding?
So to me, in that example that you gave, that would be the weekly meetings that the deans or the principals have or the group meetings that they have once a month, where they're looking and seeing patterns and how are we going to address it as an organization, as an administrative team? You know, we had the training for the administrative evaluation back at HOGA. We sat for a half a day, think, okay, what does this mean? And collectively came to an agreement that this is what we're targeting. This is what the bullseye, if you will, that we're trying to hit. So when you're looking at the structure, it's the meeting. It might be a document.
Got it.
We did, I think for the first time, this, did we done for long? Well, it's a debate, and I can't tell you prior. There is one IDP for brand new teachers that was given this year. Rather than each administrator creating their own, we created a structure that we're all using this. The law says we got to include these in the IDP. We're creating those structures.
And then to transfer the question? And again, that's kind of how I did this, just so you know, Brian. I went to the highly effective column and I said, okay, yep, I see that. Yep, I see that. Yep, I see that. So I just, when I'm asking you, I'm just, we may be doing it, I just don't, you know, like what you just shared? I don't know because I'm not in the buildings anymore, not in the district. So, okay, so looking at bullet 2, skillfully guides, supports, nurtures, and nurtures teacher in their instructional improvement. So I know you talked, we talked about the kindergarten teachers are now doing the reading. That would be one example.
That would be one, that would be Ms. Ara going in and working with Brett Burke, who's a brand new CT teacher, and spending time with him at the ISD and guiding him. That would have been me sitting with Andy when he took over CT. Now, that was two years ago, so you can't include in this one. Where I sat doing a guide and we're going to do this together. It would be, Ms. Ara with launching the STEAM. We did that whole new STEAM curriculum with the badge. Sitting with teacher.
Well, that's why we just never had it for you.
You have her sitting with the math teachers. And we said, we got a problem. We did scheduling this year. We sat with the administrators. So we're going to have more than one teacher teach a subject so that if there's a personality conflict between a student and teacher in elder one, we have another option for that student. That was intentionally done and we did that as a team. That would have, it's not something I can just do. It's something I have to sit down with the administrator to do and work through all the logistics that had to take place.
See, I mean that, to better understand what that is. I'm going out. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or suggestions or want to speak on anything. I'm going down to take my administrative hire, by the way. I wasn't effective, so I'm going to go highly. I just needed some answers. Anybody else have any comments, anything they want to add? Mr. Wonsley, would you like to address it in any way?
No.
Okay, so at this point, we have five effectives and two highly effective. So the component will be effective. What should we put down for statements?
Thank you for probably kind of summarize what you just said about bullet 2. I think there's really, or guiding and supporting.
Okay, so, how can we word this? He guides, Mr. Wonsley guides and supports our curriculum director, our administrators to help improve the instruction? Does that sound appropriate? Any other comments?
I like that bullet point under, the first bullet point under effective. Actively developing expertise about quality instruction. Like I kind of mentioned in the beginning of sitting down with Ms. Ara and looking at new curriculums that might better suit our students. So continuing, you know, to actively, or continuing to develop quality instruction.
Or continue, I got to continue to develop quality instruction. Any other comments? Okay. I will read component 4. Component 4 is communication and community relations. The superintendent is a key voice for the district and sets the stage for open communication by requesting and responding to community feedback. This standard evaluates the superintendent's ability to communicate effectively with the broader community, including staff, students, and parents, parents, sirs, guardians, and to actively engage the community in productive partnerships. It also focuses on the superintendent's advocacy on behalf of the district with other government and community officials. We had one and a half highly effective, five and a half effective. Again, the person who did effect, or the split had circled two sections.
I was the highly effective.
Okay.
I think he's fantastic in this category. The only issue I've ever had is his written communication home and it's been vastly improved. We talked about it in May. And everything else, he's fantastic in this category. The multiple groups he's in, the respect that he has in those groups and just the advocacy for our district everywhere he goes.
I was an effective. But I would be, I like that you put all this together because it's things that I do think about would fall into that category and things like that. So it's good to be refreshed because we don't remember everything. So I would have to, I would probably move mine from effective to highly effective.
Angela, if you want.
I'm reading effective at this point. While I think you're great with community relations and I really appreciate all of your efforts towards the parents during the COVID times. That has been greatly appreciated for all of us. And I appreciate you fielding those questions as great as you do out in the public and even at our meetings. I would like to see, I guess, improvement, which we already spoke to, which I know isn't necessarily, it's you chasing after the law and such. But to make sure that our website reflects what we're doing as a board. Sometimes I know I'm not sure who's in charge of updating our website, but I know that sometimes it can go beyond what we've said here and what's on the website. And the community often reaches out to our website first. So I want to just make sure that we're, was about the open reading statements, emails during open session during the COVID time. I believe there was a couple other times that just, that it's not reflecting sometimes our website, what we are doing as a board. And I know that sometimes takes time to update. So just, just a reminder on that.
Okay, so it's, to me, you got a lot of questions. I highlighted them, guys. I went through this and I took this very seriously.
I never hoped we all did.
Well, I know, but I really, I mean, this is, I believe this is the most important thing that we can do in the district for us as our superintendent and even as an administrator and as a teacher. I just believe it's, and Brian knows this because him and I have talked about this a lot. I have effective, but I have questions. One of them is, and it's a concern and I just know it because they brought a grievance here is the relationship with our principals. And I think there's a concern there. I think we've talked about it, you and I have. And I don't know, that was probably one of my things. And I guess I would ask you, how have you worked on trying maybe to improve that? Or do you not see it as an issue? And you know, you probably know what I'm talking about.
There are... I have tried to improve. We've done team building activities. I don't know if the board knows, but as a collective group with our spouses, we went to a game at Jimmy John's Field. We spent the evening together early on here to try to set the tone for the year. I have gone over to individual administrators. I have complimented them on things they have done well. Most recently, the way the elementary principal had handled the situation. I made a point to call her to make sure that she knew that I was impressed with how she handled it. I'm not there with all the administrators. There are actions of administrators that lead me to believe there are alternative modes and I'm working through those with those specific individuals. Ms. Ara has experienced some situations this year that on surface could be led, could be believed to, trying to set her up for failure. But we have addressed it with the administrators. We have approached them, talked directly with them when there's been issues. We've tried not to let it fester. We oftentimes, if you look in the conference room, or you've realized Deb as an administrator, we have vagus moments. And there are times that people just need to vent because this is a stressful job, both on their end and mine. But I would say that I am not yet there with all administrators. I personally believe we could have been there if a year and a half ago, there was a willingness on the collective group of the administrators to try to improve that relationship. But they chose not to for whatever reason. And so I have tried to work with them on certain situations.
Okay.
I'm speaking very generally because I know we're too...
I know. Again, you and I have talked about this. We've already had a conversation, so I know what, thank you. Okay, I'm finding that, that was my one and only question there. Anybody else have it? Did we get to you?
I wish you a half and half, but my bigger circle is around the highly effective. If you noticed how we circled. In this part where it talks superintendent's ability to communicate effectively with the broader community, including staff, students, parents, and guardians. In this last year and a half, this year, the communication that comes from the superintendent to our parents and staff during the pandemic has been outstanding. And I...
to our parents and staff during the pandemic has been outstanding, and I think we all believe that that's true. Very thorough and transparent. He continuously keeps us updated on, um, health department issues, gives those, the parents, the big thing that he had in September, remember the paper that was like about this big that he, that he read that went out to parents? And even, even the, the, the parents that come to the meetings, meeting after meeting, and, and saying the same thing, and Brian's giving them the same message back. Very transparent, very honest, and his ability to, a parent that had an issue about quarantining their student and was enraged, if that's the correct word, Brian, that came to the office, and Brian met with her and completely got everything straightened out in her, calm down. That, that's a highly effective individual that can take a parent, because we all know the pandemic, everything that's happening, everybody is worked up over concern over their children, their families, all of that. Like I said earlier, he's well-known in the county for his work in Richmond. He's looked as a leader outside of our district by other superintendents throughout the county. Just attended a county school board association dinner, and it's very apparent. Attend, um, the international, did I say that? International bachelor laureate graduation. Attend those kinds of ceremonies and watch Brian engage with superintendents around the county. He's looked at, um, as a leader. You know, there's always this elephant in the room about him not having a good relationship with the city, which is mind-boggling to me. He worked to get the odd soul to them, um, so they could have their building that they wanted. He's part of the Rotary, the Lions Club. The work he does with Sandy's kids, um, the ugly sweater party that we have every year that he's involved in, all the work that he does to help us make that successful so that families in our community who might not have good holidays or good things, he helps to make that event happen. God bless you. He is, um, part of the Richmond Education Foundation, and he's not just the figurehead superintendent in that group. He is part of that group and works just as hard, if not harder, than some of the rest of us that sit on that committee. And all of that is for the benefit of our students. Brian is at every function. You see Brian everywhere. People in town know who he is. We have had superintendents previous that kids didn't know who the superintendent was. If you didn't have a kid in school and lived in the community, you might not know who the superintendent is. You do with Brian Wamsley. One of the biggest things that he did this year, um, with thinking about the community and staff and students, was the John Coker Memorial. That, um, and that came to us, and Kyle and I sat down, um, as the committee, um, with the organizers of that, the work that Brian did, and Brian stepping up and saying, listen, the brick thing that needed to be, um, put into place for the, for the memorial. Our bond stuff was going on, the company that was doing work, they happened to have blue bricks, Kyle of his, so, hey, let's, how about if we get help from these guys to get this done so that that could happen for that first gate? If Brian had not done that, that would not, I believe, would not have been ready when it needed to be ready, and he did it because he knew it was important to this, people in this community, alumni, everything else to have that happen. I reached out to Brian about Strikers, the owner of Strikers, um, approaching me about the fact that, um, for our culinary class, he's looking, um, to do a partnership to get our kids maybe to come out there and cook or do some different things, and, and he told me that he had reached out to Armada, and Armada wasn't calling him back. So of course you know what I feel about that. I, well, I got Brian and, and Brian's reaching out, he and Renee, to work with Strikers to give an opportunity for our students. The, the one board goal, like Kyle said, was the, the written communication, yes, Brian does have, um, has had some issues with that, it has vastly improved. I just don't know how we can look, communicates key information to stakeholders in an appropriate timely manner with stuff with the pandemic. Alert potential issues, predicts and shares possibilities of school board in advance. You better believe it. Constituent groups report a positive relationship with district leadership. Yes. As influence in the district and beyond in supporting student learning. You better believe it. So I don't know how we don't make him highly effective in this category. I'd like to add to the piece of Brian has, has all the ways, and I know we can't go back and look at it, but he, he definitely brought in the EMT, the broadcasting classes, and has maintained those.
Brought back this year?
Yeah, we brought EMT back this year. So there's definitely those community relationships with our community. He, he does very well in those areas. Are we doing culinary arts with New Haven too?
Yes.
So there's another relationship built with New Haven to do our culinary arts program. I can definitely say in the CTE, and Brian has definitely brought those programs here, kept them, maintained them, and, and we continue, if we can't run them, we go back and we take a look at it, and we do try to run them. I would, I would, I had, my question answer, bless you. I would be okay with moving mine to highly effective. My only concern, and I know you're supposed to look at, you don't have to have all of them there, would be the leadership, our district leadership. So I'd be, I'd be willing to go to. Are you gonna go all the way, Margaret, instead of your half?
All the way. I'm going all the way.
Make that circle. I, I, oh yeah, well, that's on your deck. Okay, so we have four, okay, so you're highly, I'm highly, Kyle, and Danielle. So we have four there. That's our core or whatever for highly effective. Does anybody, Brian, would you like to add anything? I always want to give you an opportunity.
The only I can say is, is writing is not my strength. Proving is not my strength. Said to everybody that is in the office, you will get this multiple times, the joke in our office is Tammy is our, our prover. She's an excellent prover, so I have tried to improve that area as, as been one of my goals.
What statement would we like to, any comments we'd like to put here? I'd like to put something, at least a strong community.
Presence.
Presence and relationships.
And how about just, like I said, the whole pandemic thing, that's, that's been a huge thing, and, um, we've been transparent because he's been transparent.
Strong community presence, that was your word.
Yes.
Okay, Margaret, you wanted something of, you just said it, I lost it.
I said something pandemic for the, the transparency and the diligence in.
In keeping our parents notified about, okay, so wait, transparency.
Give it to me. Transparency and. Diligence in keeping, because the reality is, not only are parents up to date on what's going on with pandemic-related stuff, so is the whole community.
Any other comments? That anybody would like me to add, so I have strong community presence and relationships, and transparency and diligence in keeping our community informed on pandemic. Do you read the next one, please?
Yes. As chief executive officer, the superintendent is responsible for the management of the district's resources while providing a successful learning environment for students and a productive workplace for staff. This standard evaluates superintendent's success in managing the district's resources in an efficient, effective, and transparent manner. It demonstrates prudent fiscal stewardship and, and, and ability to adapt to emerging challenges.
Okay, so we have two highly effective, four effective, and one minimally effective on this category. Does anybody wish to start?
I have this highly effective. I think our budget process is clear and concise. All of our contracts are settled into the future, which is a huge deal, and I just think he's done great implementing the bond, which obviously is a, a daily activity.
Can I ask questions again? Okay. How would you see our students and staff hold each other accountable for high-quality performance? Bullet number three on your highly effective. I think I went down with the staff. What do we, what do we, how do we hold our kids to that, the students?
Well, I guess you could look at it from a couple ways. One way is looking at it through the governance of these student governments in each building. We had at the, at the beginning of the COVID, we had students creating videos with the administration on how we're gonna operate so that we're all on the same page. You have Mr. Castle and Mrs. Paul were creating videos of how they're gonna enter the building. There were initiatives that they are taking. They, it's far from an academic sector. You know, it goes into the classroom in terms of how they're going to target or hit the target. So for instance, if it's a writing piece, you're doing model writing. If there's a mathematics piece, you're doing parent groups to help each other out to raise them up. It's a little more challenging, I would say, that bullet in particular, because there's could be different ways you're looking at it. If you look at it from an organizational management, you could have like the Green Club, they promote the recycling and try to reduce waste in the, within the organization of their building. You have the, um.
What's the school?
Where Everybody Belongs group, where they're, they're trying to create a, um, a relationship or environment with the older and the younger kids and how they operate in the building and help them as a support network. You know, the middle school, you've got staff, or excuse me, at the elementary school, you've got staff doing their assemblies, and they're doing character trade assemblies where they're actually highlighting, um, this is what we're all focusing on, and, um, every school has some type of, um, caught being good. They may call it a different blue reward, shine tickets, and so forth, where they're trying to regulate, this is what we're looking for, rather than focusing on, um, I'm gonna get you because you're doing something wrong. There is a time and place we have to do that, because you are, you're trying to change behaviors. That's mostly what we do is change behaviors in schools. That's just off the top of my head, some of the areas that, depending on the focus if you want to do, like I said, academically, it could be model writing. At the elementary school, you've got staff who are putting bulletin boards up with the actual, um, objective and target that they would put on the bulletin board. So if someone's walking by, they see that piece of writing or art, this is what they're focusing on.
Are they, are they still required to put the objectives on the board?
We still have the learning targets. We just picked up, actually just picked up about a week, the new stickers to put on all the new bulletin boards that we put in with the bonds, or they just came, I forgot about a week, they love to install it, but yes. The expectation is you're putting the learning target on the board so that not only the students, but also the staff know this is what, this is my focus for that instruction. You know, at the end of the day, you got your, it varies, but it could be exit tickets, you know, the walkout, do they actually need the target? Is it a quick assessment that a teacher does? Is it a, you know, throw a problem up on the board, and as you're leaving, write it on a stick of paper, and it gives me a quick reference whether they got it?
So that's, when I was looking at bullet two and bullet three, um, they're kind of, to me, they're kind of the same or a little bit close to each other, because like the conduct piece is our, you know, like our web thing and our, our doing good thing. You know, that's where I saw that. So when I was looking at bullet three, I was probably, I know what I was doing, I was looking more for instructional.
Every new teacher that is hired, one of the questions that they're asked is, you're in a staff lounge, and you hear other staff members talking poorly about a student or family or sort of, what do you do? And I can tell you, any candidate who doesn't have an answer to that one, I don't move them on, because we do have to self-regulate. If you see something wrong, you need to be part of the team and address it. And there have been candidates that, well, I just wouldn't do anything, I'd go back to my classroom and eat my lunch. Well, I don't want that type of person in this organization. I want someone that's gonna work with that and address it in the classroom. So from an interviewing, that's, that's one way that I'm looking for, is make sure we have staff that regulate themselves.
And then up on bullet one, I was okay with the first part of it. Establishes a clear set of standards and operating procedures and routines. Brian, you have that down. I would say almost to a fault sometimes. You've created more forms and things in this district since you've been here, but it does help keep us organized. But the second part says that exemplify the district vision and values and maximizes the opportunity for student, for each student's learning. Could you, could you address that part of it, just like the second part? Like, how do we get that to our students? How does that fit with our students? How do we?
I would look at this as, as being, the conversation we have with staff that, challenge is the word that's coming to mind, but I don't want to say, I'm gonna use, I can't think of the other word. Challenges our current policies and practices. For instance, we have a situation, a policy that says after 15 excused or unexcused absences, we report you to the IST for terrency. Terency, in my eyes, is something, and it's my opinion, I have a following, but it's, it's something that we are reflecting that will probably come to you at a certain point, because terrency is someone that student is not coming to school. We have situations where we know the reason students are not coming to school. Could be a medical reason, it could be some other reason, and we're providing instruction to those students? To me, that is not the candidate to go after for terrency because we're instructing. The candidate for terrency is the one that doesn't show up, doesn't attend school, the parents aren't involved, we gotta put some other outside pressure. So it's, it's looking at what our vision is as a district, what we're trying to do to create the best learning environment possible, and making sure our policies are not interfering with students reaching that. So when I look at the, you know, maximize opportunities for students' learning, and look at, you look at our scheduling, you know, the question came up is why do we teach algebra one, geometry, algebra two? And there's often a story, and many administrators and people in the organization will know, it's a hamster. And I said it before, you know, you know, your, my grandma cooked a ham, and so I asked my grandma, I asked my wife, why she cooks a ham this way? She cuts off the ends, and she goes, I don't know, my grandmother did it, or my mother did it that way. So we go ask her mother, why do you cut it up? Well, my grandma taught me, cut the ends off the ham, put it in the pan, and stick it in the oven. So we ask grandma, and she goes, the real reason is because that's the only way it would fit in the pan. Sometimes we do things that we don't even know why we do them, because it has evolved over time. That's what I'm looking for. We go through that handbook every year, you know, we've done student groups, and say, okay, why do we have this policy? I don't know. The perfect example is that parent that came up here, we had a policy, and that was back from 1960-something. I don't know, it's just always been in there, we've never, never questioned it. So I guess that's what I'm looking at, is if there are policies to get to our vision that are impeding students from reaching it, scheduling, you know, we're at a crossroads right now. Right now, we have students that have failed first grade, and based on how they've performed so far in second grade marking, unless they get 100% on everything, and unless they get an A plus on that exam, they're not earning that credit. We, we deal with this. So what are we doing policy-wise, program-wise, to address those kids and get them back on track? I think Renee, when she did, started the, um, the credit, and I mentioned it in a previous quarter, we did a free, used some of our COVID dollars to do credit. we did a free, used some of our COVID dollars to do credit recovery for kids that were behind. We had many kids that got back on track to graduate after being in COVID. So to me, I'm looking at, what are kids looking at? You know, what do they want out of this situation? I mean, I'm going at a variety of ways because it can be looked at in so many different ways. If our ultimate vision is that we create a world-class environment, then we need to think outside the box on how we do things off of it. I truly believe every student in this district needs to experience a ACT course.
I agree.
I think they should. What CT course? You know, we're looking at, you know, we're actually one of two districts looking at right now doing esports. That is the hottest growing trend to create a sports avenue with esports. Now, some people say kids need to get on, move, but we have a population where they're not, they're not doing that. This is their app. That's what we need to be looking at in our policies.
Also, like, could we put in there, like, the fact that we have, I think you told us 25 kids that don't want to be in school, so we're providing that virtual?
It's 20, last number that I have is 22 students that we have provided virtual because that's, they want a virtual environment. It's challenging. Virtual is not an easy platform to learn from. So we've put in place things like, okay, we're checking to make sure if they're not on board, whose car is it? Is it social workers that are counselors? So we put in some strategies like that, that we can check on those students to make sure that we're giving them as many opportunities to succeed. But again, you can only take them so far, it's got to be, they got to have a motivation.
How, do we still do, instead of suspending a kid out of the building, do we do the in-school suspension where it's then monitored and they're doing something online?
We currently do not have any long-term suspension, we haven't been going through anything over 10 days. We have, but that is still an option. Currently, we have staff picking up on their time because we don't have the person. My hope is that the next board meeting, we will have a candidate, but it's going to create a domino, but I think it's going to be a candidate from within the district.
How about, do we have someone monitoring kids that are doing credit recovery?
Yeah, we changed our practice because the pupil accounting laws require them only to be monitored for two-way communication twice a week during the four weeks after company. We require it the entire, every week. And that there's a daily attendance taken, there is a contact log that's created that we're checking on those students because the goal is, I don't want them to fail in the 11th hour. If they're struggling up front, we need to put together a plan to help them before they get to that point. And we've had a lot of credits obtained through that process. There are still some that are behind in graduation. They are behind. My first expulsion student in this district graduated last year walking across the stage and you ask the principal at the high school, you ask the dean of student, we did everything we could to get this kid and he had every opportunity and I really believe at some point, he believed someone cares about him and he just committed to graduate. If he didn't have that online room, if he didn't have that support network, I really don't believe he would have been here past 10th grade. Maybe there's two, three on the board that you might remember.
He graduated. I was just going to say, I know who it is.
No, two years ago.
Two years ago.
We did the graduation on the stage.
During COVID, when he graduated. Okay, those are just my questions. I originally had effective, I will move my one vote, whatever we call it, to high. I just needed, again, some answers or some thoughts.
Brian, I had a question. The kind of survey monkey you did about, was it the ESR money?
Yes.
Was that, was that a requirement for the money?
Yes, that was required. Districts, I didn't mean to cut you off, districts do it in a variety of ways. That is on the plan to come to this 13th of December's board meeting because we have to present to the board the survey results and our plan. The ESR money, three, the rules have been changing. If you recall, we did the budget last time, we put some counselor, we have the building substitutes, COVID aids, and trying to go from items that we had in that money. In September-ish, they then said, well, you've got to do 20% for accelerated learning. So part of that has been our credit recovery process we did last year that we're going to charge or do initiation stuff. But the rules have been slightly changing through the process. So that to gain meaningful, meaningful dialogue, meaningful communication, meaningful ideas from parents is yes. And we have to target parents with special needs students, EL students, Title I students. So that's why some of the questions are not designed.
Were they, were you able to come up with the answers to the choices or was it all laid out for you?
We took the start of the survey from another district that did it and Renee and I tweeted to say, okay, how, like for instance, the categories on it, I'm going to back up. The survey that we got was a general questions on survey. We reached, we find it because in ESR, there are certain requirements and that's why they're grouped that way. I think we call it components of the, like I'm talking about what they're called. So we wanted to make sure that we were addressing each component so that if we were ever audited, we could say, okay, the reason why we put the dollars here was because component and the feedback we got from the parents said this, that we support them. It doesn't necessarily mean that we will, but it's to gather the impact of where people's priorities are, where they would like to see. There's some technology. I don't think we're in a position that we're going to need to spend really a whole lot of dollars on technology because of what we've done with other funds and other ESR money that we've got, but we had to at least address it. There may be a population that, you know, one of the districts came on their survey, you know, they'd like to have hotspots on buses and parked buses throughout districts that have areas where they, an opportunity for parents to get to a hotspot closer. We know we have areas in this district that there's, they just, you know, we had one parent speak at many of our board meetings last year, we've tried multiple server providers, ATC, like Eric, who, Eric has been working with their director trying it last year, but... So that's what the survey is going to give us that information on. But it was a requirement that all districts do it. Some districts are doing individual meetings. We have a deadline that we had to meet and we, you know, we got the clarification and figure out what's the quickest way to get the most input.
I voted effective and I'm going to change it to highly because with budget and everything, you are very thorough and you answer any questions we have, so.
Okay, so we have, well, let me stop a minute. Anybody else have any comments?
Just minus highly effective. And I, what I say every single year, this is the budget part. There isn't anybody on this board that doesn't know the budget inside and out for all the stuff that we talk about and the money that's back into our fund balance. The $500,000 is huge. And I guess I just have, whoever did, the overall budgets came back good, however, they could have been great. Some items were a little more thought out than frivolous. Lawyer consults, I'm assuming it says MSBA, I'm assuming we meant MASP could be used.
You're right.
Stifles for sports. I guess I just look at that, our budgets were outstanding, not just good. And consulting MASP, I don't know why we would ever have our superintendent contacting MASP for free legal advice. MASP gives advice on overall broad issues, not district-specific. That's what we have our attorneys for. So I would never want our superintendent getting free legal advice. That's what we have attorneys for, that's what we pay them. And Brian consults attorneys when he has questions or concerns and he wants to make sure that he's doing the right thing by his district.
Anybody else have any other comments? Mr. Wong, would you like to address this?
No, I just would like to add to this is, so, budgeting several, several people made comments on the budget. You know, when I started here, that board at the time charged me with bringing back, figuring out a way to bring back bargain units that were privatized at that point. And I have all but one group yet to bring back because it's the custodians. We brought back in-house the food service, we brought back in-house the transportation. When we talk about this $500,000, I believe it's strategic how we spend our dollars to make sure we are charging dollars to grants that we can get full refunds or reimbursements for so that we can maximize our general fund to be left over that you guys have discretion on as a board. And we did that in the last two years, particularly this last year, by reclassifying employees when we were in virtual shutdown or when we were part-time. And I'm thinking of the spring break issue that we had in the spring. Moving employees out of general fund and putting them into the grant dollars helps it bottom line. I just want to make sure we're clear, we didn't have $550 million, $1,000 in a million dollars that were just sitting there unspent. It was, it was an effort of reclassifying and maximizing the federal dollars and state dollars that we received so that we could have them. Because in the long run, we're going to hit another cycle where the state's not going to come through. And the more you have in your fund balance to protect you, the position as a district you'll be in to not have to cut programs to balance budgets. I just want to make sure it was clear that there wasn't $500,000 that we just had an outcome. Things came in, we didn't have bus fuel, we didn't have the transport.
Anybody else? Okay, so at this time, with the people that have moved and shifted, we have four highly effective and three effective. So this one will be highly effective. Anybody have some statements that you'd like me to play some? We said budget, do we want to play some of our well-balanced, well-balanced? I mean, even guys, when we had the auditors in, they talked about all of our, I remember when she gave us an example of all of our practices, they're good.
How about continues to make fiscally sound judgments and decisions that keep the district moving forward?
Continues to make fiscally, that's not probably, sound judgments and decisions. Okay. Any other comments or any other we want to put here? I'd like to just add that we do have, I don't know how to word it, but we do have, after, you know, Mr. Wong's shared with us, we do have a lot of programs out there for kids, both instructionally and for conduct. I do believe, and I don't know, is our, I know since we redid the walls, is our sign back up here at the high school that used to be right in the corner here in the hallway about how to be, what is, I forget what the high school's was.
Cold Blue?
Yeah, Cold Blue.
Back up.
Yeah.
You could take that whole, that first point, you could just write that.
Which one, Margaret?
That first one under highly effective establishes a clear set of standard operating procedures and routines that exemplify the district vision and values and maximizes the opportunity for each student because that's what you just said.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, that is pretty much what I just said. Now, if I'm going to write that, it's going to take me a few minutes.
Or you can just put master's and...
Oh, you know what? I'll start it and then I'll maybe draw a mirror or something. Okay, so I have two comments. Continue to make fiscally sound judgment and decisions to keep district moving forward. And then I started the establish a clear and set, and I did dot, 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 and I said first highly effective bullet. Any other comments? Okay. Margaret, would you read number six, please? Component six.
Professionalism and ethics. The superintendent is held with highest ethical standards of conduct and is expected to require the same of district staff. The standard evaluates the superintendent's conduct to ensure that the superintendent acts professionally and consistently with the core values, tenant's mission and vision of the district and models this conduct for district employees.
Okay, we currently, before we talk, we have two, two, and three. I'll go first.
Thank you.
You're welcome, since this one makes my head want to explode, so I'll go first. Highly effective. There is no one more professional and ethical than Brian Wamsley. I think he exhibits that every single day and every single thing he does. The professionalism that he has shown over the months with the COVID parents that are coming month after month and sometimes asking the same questions over and over, but he answers them and reiterates and makes them not feel that whether he agrees with them or disagrees with them, they're being heard. Brian has suffered this year hugely by attacks by people on this board and that he has maintained the professionalism that he has, I think is astounding and highly, highly, highly effective. If you look at those points there, one, two, three, four, and they're highly effective, leaving needs them all. Some of the things that make my head want to explode on this form, and I'm sure no one will admit that they said it, but district let many staff go with superintendent, took time to meet, create a position for some and not others. When asked about an action, runaround answers are given. I have no idea what that means. Grievance brought to the board from admin group and refused by superintendent to put things in writing. Needed improvement in modeling conduct openly to all so all staff can see your objectives and understand your intentions. I don't know that anybody does know what Brian's ethical and professional intentions are. Work needed to help all staff and students feel they are being treated equally and feel that expectations are the same for all district staff and students. I just think anybody who put those kind of things down, that's really a shame. Did I say highly effective? You did. Start talking, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else like to address this one?
I have it as highly effective also.
Thank you. Brian, can you give me an example of where you self-evaluated and did a change or made a change?
In the last 12 months.
Yes, please.
I was looking at the parents in the board, listening to where we were last year in COVID and their plan going forward this year. We met with, we're still running CMS two years ago and against the recommendation of healthcare officials, we went in one direction. You know, I think we've reflected on practices, you know, we've gotten a push from elementary that wants visitors back in their building. I haven't allowed it from the perspective of the numbers aren't there and I'm trying to keep our staff and students safe and so that we can stay in school. I'll be honest, Thanksgiving's taken a toll based on today and the number of staff that are now tested positive. I'm worried. I'm worried that I'm going to start reflecting. We are not... We will be virtual soon because I don't have staff to run a building pretty soon. So I looked at spending the time this summer. When Renee came on board, I'm really looking at how we're going to work with the administrative team. Reflecting, oftentimes it's been said that I micromanage and trying to get out of that mindset, that perception and allow the organization to run within its department.
I have to go get some water, sorry.
I think I reflect it. I mean, I'll be honest, I have as many conversations that I've had with the board president. I should wait till she gets back, but how do I work with her?
Why don't you hold up? Let her go get her water. I was at your talk hall stuff. She and her talked about, let's make sure she's able to be here to hear what you're saying. We should have taken an intervention. Just take a break for a minute. I'm sorry.
Deb, we took a little break.
Okay. Take a little break, so. I'm sorry, because I was the one who asked you questions.
I was mentioning, there's times I reflect on the way things have happened that I seek guidance from other people in correcting or changing or addressing. We've had multiple conversations in my office and I said to you many times, I don't know what to do. I don't know where to go. We had a conversation, Angela and I, about, and she had a lot of good points that made me think about the people's perceptions and the way people may perceive you. And that may not be the intended to come across. I have purposefully stayed out of the direct day-to-day with the board and stayed at the 30,000-foot level with the administrative team so that they only have the ability to make the decision for their instruction that is happening in their building. Their PD, we might have given them the framework, but the design was theirs, had to be theirs. Where I would probably say in the past, I was much more hands-on with that process because that's what I love about, you know, I've said this board and other boards, this board with other boards. This part of it is not what I wanted education. It was the instructional part that I thrive on. But now having key people in place and allowing them to lead. Do I still get the questions? And I try to reflect and twist it and ask the question back. What do you think we should do? Or come with a solution rather than just a question? And let's think through that.
That's good.
Oh, I guess like I said, three people on this board said Brian is minimally effective in professionalism and ethics. How so? It's my mind blowing to me. So what's the rationale for that? What has he shown?
I can give an example. I didn't put that down. I just wanted to clarify, but I can give you an example. And again, this is just, talking to the district, whatever. Mr. Wamsley made an arrangement with a staff member. And when other staff found out about this arrangement, they were upset. And so that's just a recent thing. And so what happens is you add staff people that are like, well, how come I didn't get that?
Okay, and great, but if you weren't one of the three minimally effective, I'm asking the couple who minimum... Three people said who's minimally effective in professionalism and ethics. How? Okay, Angel, this is where I'm going to have...
Okay, well, I don't...
No, 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 this is where I'm going to be really, really control myself.
Okay.
For you, okay. Yes, I'm going to control myself for you.
Okay.
You cannot put down that someone is minimally effective in a category if you can't back it up. That's where I get angry, Angelie. You know that? It's happened. You cannot... There's no justification for it. You've got no business putting that down.
I'll say something because that is the one thing that put minimally effective. Actions and intentions are not always clear and transparent. And kind of going on what David mentioned and just some other questions that I had throughout the year. That's where it kind of was with that. Fairness to staff is where you've been raised this issue.
I agree.
Like the same thing...
Teachers. Wait, sorry.
The same thing as far as just not posting the one thing. And I don't need to bring that up again, but it's sort of, sort of made me choose that one.
That made it minimally effective. It used to teachers, people plural are coming to you and telling you that Brian's...
Nobody's coming to me.
Okay.
Nobody's coming.
Okay. So you're not talking plural things? You're talking that one little...
I just read what was there.
Right, right. Figure that one incident that you're referring to makes him minimally effective in the whole category.
To some degree, I have made a decision. I guess I'll say yeah. And could model self-awareness reflective practice?
You don't think Brian's self-aware?
To some degree, yes.
Do you think he conducts himself professionally at our meetings? And all the, okay, all the crap that he's put up with with some board members this year? Do you think he's very professional? And how he, like, I don't think anybody would know, sitting at this table out there in the general public for the majority of the time up until maybe just in the last month, who was doing those things to Brian? Would you say? Do you say anybody out in the community would know? What issues that Brian was having with school board members?
I don't know. I can't say for sure.
Okay. Brian, do you tell people out in the community your issues with school board members? The problems that you're having?
My wife is the only that I can find.
I'm not talking about your wife. Everybody's got to talk about their spouse.
Well, she has a PO box and she's a community member very soon, so yes.
But all the groups that you're a part of...
I would say that in the groups that I have been a part of, people have said things to me and I have tried to be...
As ethical and professional as you can?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Two more. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
You know, it's been brought up about this, we'll just call it like it is, the agreement that I... I wouldn't say the agreement because it's within the contract, but Brandon Day's agreement. I try to work with every staff member. There are staff members who have approached me and asked to take, just this year, the day before Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving off. By contract, I don't, but I work with them. And they've taken it off. They flew back from out of state and missed a part of the day. There are staff members, and I said this before, that I have called after they resigned and said, if you apply, what are they offering you that I will match with what they've done? To try to keep and retain staff members within the framework that I have to work with. I'm not perfect and there's hundreds of policies we deal with. And there may be a policy that I don't remember, that I didn't reference. But as far as ethics, I left the other district because I couldn't work with unethical people. Professionalism, I look at our jobs as the parish priests. You are here night and day to get it done. And so if you're one that's here for my administrative team, you come in at 7:30 and leave at 3:00, you're right. I do put pressure on them because that is not the role that we've hired them for. You are the parish priest. And so when you get grievances that, well, he didn't put it in writing, well, it can violate some of the ties, I didn't need to put it in writing, but I've also honored what I said I would do. And I said all along that I would pay them. Or that the gastritis arranged... How many off-the-record conversations have we had? And agreed side tables to get things done? And I've honored it. So there are... It's a process to run the district, but I will not break the law. You have parents up here asking me. And a board member started to turn the spotlight on me and say, hey, what would it take if we passed a resolution to violate? I won't break the law. You may disagree with me, yell and scream at me, but I'm not going to compromise my ethics or my profession. I said earlier, there are some people that chose to leave. They chose to leave because I believe in what we documented. They were not right for this organization. We had a parapro that chose to go to lunch and leave kids unattended while they went home. That parapro sat January 2nd waiting for my termination. We had a teacher who left kids go to the sensory room because she didn't want to teach them math. That teacher's no longer here. So if turning up the heat is what I need to do to get the bad apples out, I will do that. We don't have any bad apples. Our teachers are dedicated, they're hard, are parapro. That's Chrissy Lasper. Every day, I can't say enough about what our special ed parapros do. We met with our food service. I said to them, I would love to be able to give you what you really want. I said, but let's meet, figure out how to resolve what you're frustrated by because they want to open their contract and they're negotiating. I'm willing to sit down with anybody, but I will not compromise on my ethics. I've done nothing wrong.
So Deb, then my question to you, the conversation you and I had, that if we're going to sit in here in this evaluation and if you can't back up what you said, what you said doesn't count.
Correct.
So you've got two minimally effective that don't count in my mind. You don't have the guts to say why you did it and you can't back it up, then it doesn't count.
I thought it only didn't count if you had a conversation.
If you're calling him minimally effective and you can't speak up to why you did it, he doesn't know why you're calling him minimally effective. You're not backing up what you did in any way, shape, or form.
Well, we still have to decide anyway because we don't have a board. So we need to...
How do I go on playing out to effective? So we'll let the situation advance to... And then...
We're still at two, three, and two.
So the other two effective, she moved her stuff. The other two, there's nothing in what you just said and what he laid out that leads you to believe you can move yours to highly effective. Well, you're going to move yours from minimally to effective? Just to make it four? Doesn't count, Deb? How does that work?
She gets to make that choice. It's her decision.
But she can't back it up? She's just good at... Bridget, you're just good at saying, oh, let's make it effective. So I see there's three, I'll make it four without any backup?
Sure. Margaret?
Great job.
It's not a test.
I can say that. Man is hugely ethical and one of the most professional people in this district. You can't even back it up because you know you can't.
So what do I have? I have two highly more effective and one minimally. So we have a four met effective. Okay, any comments? Would we want to put for comments, please?
Should be highly effective? That's my comment.
What would we like? Anything? We don't have to put anything if you want to leave it.
I would like to put demonstrate self-awareness and uses reflection to improve practice.
Okay, I got to demonstrate self-awareness. So would you, Angel?
And uses reflection to improve practice.
Okay, thank you. On the active board. Any other comments you'd like me to add to this section? Okay. The next component, all that we asked Brian to provide us with would be progress on his goals. I'll read the... It says it is the intent of the evaluation to cover all major components of the superintendent's job duties, including the below-listed statutory components. However, each school district varies and it's impossible to anticipate the unique characteristics in each district. This component gives the superintendent and board the opportunity to jointly agree upon other factors to be considered in the superintendent's evaluation. So out of the five factors there, we just asked about the goals. So Brian, if you could share your goals and then what, how you've accomplished them.
The goals we discussed at the May 10th and April 24th board meeting. First goal was the superintendent shall continue to build a trusting, collaborative, and respectful relationship with the Board of Education through written communication, in-person meetings, and telephone conversation. The board's support was replied through written communications, in-person meetings, and telephone conversations in a timely manner and the board will respectfully communicate with the superintendent. The board measures these goals by the superintendent will keep a log of written communications, in-person meetings, and telephone conversations that demonstrate a building relationship with the board. Here is a log. I apologize for the font. I thought it was print larger. There's a log of over 1,000 documented written communication, in-person meetings, and telephone conversations that I had with the board. I'll be honest with you, there's more because my telephone record, I could not go past September 1st when I was looking at my phone. So I do not have anything from May till September on telephone records and conversations. But here's that one. The second goal, superintendent shall review and recommend to the Board of Education a building-level administrator evaluation tool that provides quality feedback to allow for administrator to grow as instructional leaders. And if the board were to approve it, the superintendent shall provide training to administrators on the instrument. The board's support for this goal was the board would approve the superintendent's recommendation on the administrative tool. It will be measured by documenting all the training dates on the new evaluation tool. And the superintendent will log all mentoring or meetings with administration regarding the evaluation. On August 4th, after the board approved the evaluation in June, the administrators received training from Collins and Baja on the new adopted administrator and central office tool. In the afternoon on August 4th, administrators... In the afternoon on August 4th, administrators and central office discussed the standards and expectation for each evaluation component, where Ms. Aaron and I provided the documentation of those standards to administrators. On October 5th, during one of Ms. Aaron's bi-weekly meetings, one-on-one meetings, excuse me, she had with Mr. Gibson, she reviewed the tool and trained him, as he was not part of the original training on August 4th. So all administrators have been trained. On October 12th, during another one-on-one bi-weekly meeting with the dean of students, they discussed individual goals for the evaluation that each person wanted to create based on their building's need and professional goals. On October, the week of October 26th, again during her bi-weekly meetings she had with the principals, they also set the goals that they wanted to establish. On November 9th, they met with each principal and the dean of students to finalize the goals and objectives. On November 16th, that was with the principals, during the week of November 16th was the dean of students. Today was supposed to be the training on the financial portion of the evaluation of the budget. Unfortunately, Tammy is not being here, was sick today, so that will be rescheduled. So we have trained them, we've gone over their goals to establish how they're going to be measured, as well as the... Goal number three, the superintendent shall continue to improve the quality of written communication disseminated to the public. The board will support this goal by the board, don't find the superintendent and there are any concerns with written communication from the superintendent's office. The board will measure this goal, or excuse me, by the superintendent will keep a file of sample documentation that were disseminated to the public. Here you have examples of the June 1st, June 14th, the return to learning plan, and the amended plans. There were two board members that expressed their displeasure with my June 14th regarding the COVID vaccinations and so forth letter, so I appreciate them bringing them to my attention. I believe it was at the 28th board meeting that that was shared, I think we were at Beniach's. And then there were several, two board members that had brought, I think it was the original return to learning plan, there was a spelling error, grammaticals that was corrected and fixed, and to be posted on the website, so I appreciate that, bringing to your attention those are my three goals.
Okay, so we have to go back, and we have to, I guess, decide if he met them as far as effective, highly effective, or minimally. So going back up to building this relationship with the board, from what he shared with us, obviously there's a lot of phone calls, a lot of meetings. I just, I don't know, should we just go down the line?
I am highly effective on everything.
Okay. Danielle, I'm just going to go down the line, because we got a...
I would say effective.
Okay, Angela? Highly effective, I'm on three. Okay, I'm going to do one at a time, because I...
Sure.
I'm doing Margaret, okay. I was highly effective on that one. Effective. Margaret?
Highly effective.
And Sherri?
I'm not going to mark it as effective.
Well, I will, at least. I'm just going to mark highly effective, it looks like it's break 4 to 2 right now.
Highly effective.
Okay. Because those were the goals that we set, and he met them. Correct. Yes. Correct. Okay, we'll go back to review and recommended the administrative tool. I know, you want to start again?
I'm highly effective on all three.
Okay. Danielle?
I would say effective.
Okay, Angela?
It's effective.
I'm highly. Margaret?
Highly. I'm sorry, what is this for?
This is the administrative tool.
Goal two?
Goal number two.
Oh, highly.
Okay. So that one's highly effective. And then, continue to improve the written communication was the last one. Kyle, I know said he's up highly. Danielle?
Highly.
Angela?
Effective.
I'm highly. Effective. Margaret?
Highly.
And then Sherri?
Highly.
So in that overall section, that's going to be highly effective. Do we want to put any comments in there? On that one?
Not the goals that you set. Basically, that's just about right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we're going to go back through now on this overall page. So visionary leadership was effective. Policy grievance was effective, governance, I'm sorry, thank you. Instructional leadership was effective. Communication and community relations was highly effective. Organizational management was highly effective. Professional ethics was effective. And then the last one, which we just did, was highly effective. Okay, so the overall rating, we have four effectives and three highly effective. We have to come to a consensus. Are we factoring in? I think it's just on this section, it's just these, because then we've got to do student growth, and then that does some number to me. So according to what we have here, we're taking the majority, it's effective. And I would want to...
I would agree. I'd agree with you, but... I think the individual components, you know, speak individually, and they're the appropriate spots. Overall, it's just...
Do you want to put any comments here? Okay, the next section is the student growth. Brian, I'm going to let you address.
So the student growth on that part of the evaluation, you take, it's kind of like a hierarchy, you take the, it's now with the administrators moving over to this new, their student growth is based on the teachers, overall teachers, so if theirs is generally effective as teachers in the building, then their student growth is overall effective, based on that building. Because in the teacher evaluation, that's where it's required by law to have 40% student achievement, and 50% of the 40% to be status, it's complicated, but they have the student growth data in very well, so collectively, if you're working up, theirs should feed into their administrator. And the way this one's written is, you take the teachers, I provided you teachers and administrators, and you look at their overall rating, and collectively, basically where they most of them fall now would be. So in the document you received in your backup, we have 34 teachers received highly effective, and 52 teachers received effective, no minimally or ineffective teachers. This is kind of awkward, because it goes through last June 30th, because theirs is a different cycle than mine. So basically, 60.5% were effective, 39.5% were highly effective. So based on the narrative that the student wrote down for the adminis, for my evaluation, if you look at the majority where they fall, would be effective. I did provide you the administrators, though it doesn't say to take in consideration the administrators...
I don't understand why.
Because I have the least direct impact to teachers, it goes through the principal, I don't know why it's written that way, other than the administrators are just new, so maybe in the future they will change the values, I don't know. But mine's based on the teacher ratings.
Okay, so...
So I highlighted it, I don't know if you want this for your copy, but I highlighted both.
Yeah, why don't you, we'll put it all together. Thank you. So the question I have real quick, I'm just looking at this form, it says, student growth and assessment rating for teachers, do we have to mark or circle something there?
On the form, you would, for teachers, would be effective, since the majority would be effective.
Okay.
And then below, you're now basically transferring to the superintendent to be effective.
Okay. Anybody want to put any comments on this section? I'd like to, I would just like to say, thank you for changing the administrator's It's, it wasn't good. Okay, the next page, it's based on two categories, da-da-da-da-da, circle, the rating determined by the board, which was categories, so we had basically effective for both of them. Circle them.
Numerical rating would be three for each of those boxes, score of 30.
Yeah. For the overall. So do you put in the rating box, do you put three, or do I put?
In the rating box, you would put E.
Oh, perfect.
And the numeric, you would put the three, because the E is equivalent to the three on the chart. And then it's, Kyle did the math, three times six is 18, and three times four, that's 16, 40%, by law, you have to weight it that way.
Got it.
Gives you a total of 30, and then the matrix is at the bottom.
Okay, so it's overall will be effective, is there any final comments, from the board that they would like to add into that? Any overall final box comments, anything you want me to add?
Keep doing the great W R, Brian, thank you.
I think this is where you could probably make a comment, but those highly, those three that were highly effective, that almost had, you know, ended up with a highly effective rating, so maybe that continues. Something regarding the budget and the community relations, I forgot what the third one was.
Unlucky we are to have them as our superintendent?
Out of the seven categories. It's not a category.
So continue to...
Or just, thank you for being diligent with the budget, involved with community relations, and I don't know what the third one was, oh yeah.
One, seven is cool.
One, seven. Oh, that's right, the goals.
I would like to say that I do think you're doing a great job, Superintendent Wonsley. You've known, every time I've gone through this process, giving a highly effective is very difficult for me. To me, effective is a great rating. I think you are an effective superintendent, and I do appreciate you navigating through the last couple of years of this troubling time, and I want to thank you from a parent's standpoint and a board member's standpoint.
I would just like to say thank you, too. I will, I will say this has been a very growing 11 months for me personally. I told Brian, if I knew, what I knew now, if I knew it back when I was an administrator, I think we would have had a totally different relationship. There's so much more that goes on, that I think as an administrator, you don't realize what actually happens at that superintendent level. So we've had some very good, I want to thank you, we've had some very good conversations. We don't always agree, but we don't get crazy at each other. You know, we kind of just talk it through, and he has actually asked me for advice on a few things. So I just want to say thank you, because I have learned a lot, and we have a good, I feel, I don't know, but I feel like we have a good working relationship. Anybody else want to add, or?
I'll just say thank you, Brian. I know superintendent is a very hard job, there are, being in charge of parents', you know, biggest possession, with lack of a better word, it's not easy at that level, not to mention education, period, is becoming more and more difficult to navigate. I hope soon we can have some conversations. Just wanted to say thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so the next part, then we have a discussion on your contract, am I right? Is that where we go from here? Okay, so, I've had that before, so I'm not sure.
Start with...
Would you, yes, please.
The law requires you, just as we do with teacher evaluations, to consider compensation based on the evaluation. Each level, whether you're a teacher, administrator, or a superintendent, is slightly different, because oftentimes a collective bargaining agreement dictates what compensation someone will receive. At the superintendent level, the guidance that boards at least consider, doesn't mean you have to do this, is what they call normal salary index. When I talk compensation, I'm not just talking, hey, there's other things in my contract that I'm compensated for, holidays, et cetera. So Deb and I had a conversation about this part before you guys as a board talked about it, to, I guess my roles two here. One is to talk about what a normal compensation for a superintendent might look like, and a summary of the evaluation, and what has been done in the past. So what I have for you, and it's printed from the Office of Retirement Services, they do this for central office individuals, business managers, superintendent, again, basically non-collective bargaining individuals. And so the chart you have in front of you, or getting, has on the left side the fiscal year that's ending, and then there are eight columns, and it's based on the budget of a district. So for Richmond, we fall, it would actually be the fourth and fifth column over. And they give you a percentage that the Office of Retirement Services considers to be acceptable, given the year. And this goes all the way back since 1996, and part of this was as a result of Proposal A, and the state taking funding from local districts and giving it to the state. Most contracts are a July 1 to June 30th, so you look at the fiscal year ending June 30th. Most McCollum counties, superintendent contracts, and I would say even now in the state, have moved to a January 1 to December 31st to align with board elections, so that board members have a full year to work with the superintendent, rather than coming on board in January, have only four or five months with them before they got to make it. So you can see on this chart here, for fiscal year, and I just looked at the 21, because that's what would have been finished in June, the range, what is allowable ranges...
allowable ranges.
...allowable by the Office of Retirement. And I think it's important to realize, most people go into the superintendency outside of what they want to do, for good reason, but typically, your salary is higher, so in retirement years, your retirement is based on your best three years. So what the Office of Retirement Services, I think it's the Office of Retirement, right, the Office of Retirement Services did, was what they feel is acceptable, so that a district couldn't inflate someone's salary, and they get more in their retirement years. As part of the education for, as board, and many of you already know this, I am an anomaly from the perspective of coming here. I actually went back in pay. I took a pay cut to come here. So when I ultimately retire, my retirement is based on my previous districts. Because I, unless you're going to give me a very substantial rate, which I don't, I don't expect, nor would I be asking for. It's set, so a normal percentage range for a district that has a payroll from four million to ten million, on the low end would be two point four six for fiscal year ending twenty-one. And on the high end would be four point nine one. For fiscal year ending twenty-two, which would be the current school year we're in, the low end is three point six seven and the high end is seven point three five. So I just want to start, that's a guide for board, doesn't mean you have to. But typically, what they look at is this range based on the evaluation. If you, if you were effective, maybe you're at the low end to middle. If you were highly effective, you might be closer to higher. But that's how, that's the start basis or the starting point for this. So the next one I want to show you is kind of to help you understand the, and again, for those that know this already, I apologize, I don't, I don't think we've done it, but I, in our conversation, we felt it was. At least to understand where we came from or how, how we got to today. So the document you have in front of you is a chart and I'm going to start at the bottom, if you don't mind. My first contract was for July one, let me back up. Based on effective evaluation on, on the contract, once the board takes action on the thirteenth to approve the consensus of the board. The only thing that would change on my contract is the year my contract expires. In that case, it would go to twenty twenty-five, I believe, a five-year contract. There is no obligation to this board, or me for that matter, because we have a contract that's set. But with that said, the first year of my contract, I made a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That year, I was given an effective and you'll see that there's a little star. That was the year that everybody in this organization received an effective evaluation. There was a compromise in the evaluation, so we made the decision to give everybody effective. That rolled my contract to add another year, so my new contract now went through June thirtieth of twenty, which is the green box at the bottom. That year I was given effective. I made making a hundred and fifteen thousand, I received no pay increase. However, that year was the year that we switched insurance. So everybody but teachers went from Mesa Insurance to Blue Cross. So in the contract, whatever we had as Mesa, I had in my contract. So nothing changed, whatever we had, it was just moved over because we were no longer referencing Mesa. So there was no compensation added to the contract that I didn't have the previous year. Then you'll see the first blue box, which is, which extended my contract that second year to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. In June, or excuse me, October that year, we added the superintendent's evaluation document. That's the first, the third row up. It was done in, in the second amendment to the contract. Again, no changes payroll, or compensation, I should say. Go up to the second blue box from the bottom, the seven fourteen to six thirty twenty-one. Again, my pay stayed the same. I received a highly effective evaluation. In that evaluation, there was no compensation provided to me or increase. And some of these decisions, though I can't give you necessarily a pinpoint, we were also looking at the financial of the district. What were others doing, we had unsettled contracts, so there was times that because of that, as a collective board and superintendent, we, we elected not to increase any compensation. So the only thing that changed in that, where it says three evaluation, which was my third evaluation here, was the third amendment to the contract, was just the year. Then we went to the third blue box, because at this time we started changing the cycle to the, instead of a July one to June thirtieth, that year we had two evaluations. We had one done in June, which was January to June. And then we did one in the fall, which was July one to December thirty-first, so that the following year we can get on the July, January one to December thirty-first cycle. So that third box, my compensation still was a hundred and fifteen thousand, there was no increase in salary. However, in that contract, I asked for, and the board at that time granted, three things. One, the positions in my contract that said in order to support me to do my job, that you would add that the business manager transferred, there were certain positions that were listed that the board would, would guarantee that we would keep those positions. I asked for a retirement language clause, which that clause basically, basically, I'm summarizing, said, if I retire from the district, and only if I retire from the district, for every year that I worked in the district, the, the district would pay my portion of my health insurance in retirement. And that was a gamble. I chose not to ask for compensation with the idea that I would get some type of compensation at a later point. And the third thing that was added to my contract that year was the very last paragraph of my contract, which in that year, we had some hiccups in the operation of the board superintendent team. Hiccups is the right word. So we added language that says if there are concerns, complaints or criticisms that board members are hearing, they are required to notify the superintendent so that nothing would be a surprise or, you know, in the future. So those, so again, I'm still making a hundred and fifteen thousand my year adds. So now you're going to the yellow box. My base salary is a hundred and fifteen thousand. I received that year. We amended my contract in April of two thousand and eighteen. And that, the reason why we amended was I agreed at that time to not employ the director of curriculum because of financial issues in the district. So I agreed to, I agreed to waive part of my contract so that we could balance the budgets and for my intent is keep as many dollars in the classroom as possible. So now you go to the gray box on the left. Again, my compensation's still a hundred and fifteen thousand. That year I received a highly effective evaluation. In that year, the board did provide a three percent increase to my salary. So I moved from a hundred and fifteen thousand to a hundred and eighteen four fifty. The other thing that was added to my contract was everybody in central office had twelve, everybody who was central office, twelve-month employees, had twelve holidays. I only had ten. So I worked the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and I worked the Monday after Easter. So the board agreed to move me to twelve holidays. We were also at that time trying to be consistent with all the other bargaining because some had six days, seven days, nine days, holidays. We, they are now all at nine days holidays. So we're trying to be consistent with what we provide. You go to that salmon color, so we're talking one, one nineteen to twelve thirty-one of nineteen. That year I was given a highly effective evaluation. The board moved my salary to a hundred and twenty-five thousand zero twenty-one. That year, again, I had a salary increase. We also agreed that the director of curriculum position was not an ongoing, that it wouldn't be filled. It was for a two-year period. So at the end of six thirty twenty, we agreed that that would sunset and that position would come back. You go now to the blue, which would be July through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, that window contract period. My salary at that point was one twenty-five oh twenty-one. The board gave me a three percent raise after receiving a highly effective evaluation. That would have been the eighth amendment to my contract, which extended my contract to twelve thirty-one twenty-five. So in that contract, these are the things that were agreed to. The salary increase, it was a three percent increase. There was a change in the language in my contract regarding medical examination. Basically the previous language, and again, I'm summarizing then. If anytime the board questioned my medical capability, they could ask for a doctor's note and it was basically public knowledge. The language changed to there has to be reason and that the, that board members would not be receiving copies but would have the ability to examine them. Part of that was for my concern on HIPAA and that medical information being released. The other thing that I, that I asked for, which was very minor, I did, I don't have the extra dollar values I should have brought, I apologize. But I asked to increase my life insurance policy. Life insurance for district employees is very minimal. My rationale behind this was if this, and I don't mean this in, in any serious manner, other than, you know, tongue-in-cheek, but if the job's going to kill me, I wanted to make sure my wife was well taken care of. So we increased the life insurance policy to five hundred thousand. The other thing I asked for was the residency clause. At the time, your wife and I were considering moving. We were looking at, no doubt that I'm nearing the end of my career. I can't imagine retiring, but we didn't know where we were going to settle and if we were going to move. So I asked the residency, currently I had to live within thirty miles of the district. I asked that an amendment be made to allow me to go up to sixty miles within the district. And I know at that time, I don't remember which board member, but there was concern that they wanted a board member in town. And so I remember that conversation, but it was agreed to. And then just clause for termination, that there had to be reason or, or purpose for, for termination, you just couldn't arbitrarily. That leads us to this dark gray line which we are at right now, which would mean that my contract based on the board's actions tonight, or, or, not actions, consensus tonight, would extend my contract to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And that's why everything else is blank, because we do have a contract through that time. And as I said, there's no obligation for the board to change anything. But if the board wanted to, this would be normally the time that we would talk about some type of compensation or change. The last thing I just wanted to provide you in the context, and it's more informational. This is the teacher matrix. Oftentimes a superintendent is one of three groups that are considered certified personnel in the district. Superintendent, teachers and administrators. What you have here is each step, bachelors, bachelors plus fifteen. For the next three years, we've given teachers a full step increase. And those at the top will get a three percent increase to go to step ten A. So if you took the average of that increase, the average step increase in this district is five point four five percent increase in the district. From a teacher perspective. You can see on here, those at the lower end are receiving ten percent increases. Those at the top are receiving three percent increases, to give you just a perspective. The last thing with the other certified staff here is the administrators, a much smaller group. You have on here each of the administrator, this year the administrators received a three percent increase. Their contract is to be negotiated for wages only for next year and the following year, but they do also have a three-year contract. You can see where everybody's at. An administrator doesn't have all the lanes and everything, they just have steps. However, with that said, you can see where our current administrators are at. I apologize, the high school and high school dean of students did not, frankly, if it's not expanded, they, themselves, so I apologize. But from a daily rate, I am not the highest paid person in the district on a daily rate. I'm actually the second and the third person behind me is, I believe, twenty-eight cents below me. So just in, in comparison, so if you were to take my days of two hundred and sixty and you multiply by my daily rate, that gives you my current salary. There are administrators who make more than me on a daily rate.
Brian, is there a daily rate on, on this form? No.
There isn't on that form, but if you just divide by two sixty, two sixty is the number of days I'm
Required.
Now required to work. And then there are compensation days that go off that sixty, like holiday. But it's based on, if you didn't give me that, I would require you to work two hundred and sixty days. Hopefully answered what we were trying to accomplish.
Yes, you did. I, I asked Brian to do this because I knew we had some new board members. Plus, really quite frankly, the first document really helped me see, you know, where, since he's been in the district, where he's come and what we've done along the way. So I had asked him to do this so that we would be all informed. Is there any recommendation at this point? Does the board want to make any recommendation at this point?
Mine would be a three percent increase. That goes in line with what has happened to everyone else in the district.
I would agree with Margaret.
I would love it to be more, Brian, but I think.
Well, because, I guess the question I had with that is, like we always talked about the teachers and stuff, we have to have a parade order of where our money's at, but I would think three percent is going to, you know, like a sack of the park, so.
I haven't looked at the ranges, I thought the same. The first number that came to my head was three, looking at the range of two-five to four-nine to three-six to seven-four.
One thing that always makes me insane is the fact that he's not the highest paid person in this district on a daily rate. That's just, that, that is, that's appalling. A part of that is because he's, works more days.
The one thing I do want to just say, if you go back to that chart, which I forgot, I apologize, part of why I even added it. On the far right, you'll see six columns, in the dark blue. That if, I just want to point out, if the board was, in every year that you amended my contract dealing with evaluations, you followed the normal salary index, on the low end, my base salary at this point should be one thirty-seven, six eighty-two. On the high end, it should be one sixty-four, zero three six. But because I, and I just pointed out because if you didn't agree to, I asked for language changes in lieu of dollars because, or, or other benefits in lieu of dollars. It just, if you just strictly did payroll and kept the original contract, that's where we would be at this point. Give you that from a perspective.
So I guess then my question is, if, it sounds like three percent.
Is.
Does three percent work for you?
It is. I am not going to turn down any.
But it is being consistent to what we gave.
It is. I don't think I've ever asked for anything.
No, you've asked for less than what other people have gotten many, many years. Where you should have had salary increases, but you chose, there were even very heated discussions amongst board members back in the day about money and what we couldn't do and all of that. And you, you always went, what was in the best interest, you wanted your other staff people to get the salary increases, not yourself. Oh, sorry, but that's true. Just the way it is. So I'm, I'm good, three percent?
I just said three and a half. I'll go with three.
I agree with you, Pat. I would prefer to go exactly, actually a little above three percent. It seems like we're here every year with this administrative thing. Three percent, three percent, you know.
Throw it up.
Throw out a suggestion.
Yeah, throw one out.
The three and a half, like I said, I'd be comfortable with three and a half.
If you're comfortable, 3.5. And I mean, if we, I mean, if we split the difference between the 7 and the 3...
I can go 3.5, I got 3. Do I got 4? Kyle, what's, what's the difference?
I just think he's the superintendent.
No, 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 no. 3 to 3.5.
When you include FICA in retirement, the cost for every percent is about, I mean, like your retirement.
It's like $2,000.
Thank you, Kyle, for that answer.
I didn't hear Kyle. Your question wasn't clear enough.
It wasn't clear, it was clear enough down there to you. So let's, we've got 3.5 on the table. Are we, are we good with that, or?
I am too.
Okay, there it is. Okay, so, do we need to please back, your stuff back?
You can, I'll take it, it's right from the contract, like, hold it, it's something secret. There's nothing secret about it, that chart that you have, you follow the documents from all my contracts.
Is there, Ms. Wosley, is there anything you'd like to ask the board? All right, anything else for tonight? Okay, I think there is no other business, the board will adjourn at 10:30.